I think I've got six, 6:00 PM here according to the all clocks at this point. So we can go ahead and start our coordination meeting. And I guess we can begin. I always wanted to just have us open up a little bit of discussion on this planning chart to be sure that we were all on track on what was going to be on, you know, future agendas. And if there was some item that was being overlooked that we could, that you could bring it up now so the city staff could get it put in place. And then, you know, my only comment on that is I'm still interested, and we've got it on our pending on here, which is to get that, you know, rental lease addendum put in place. And there were, there were two things. One was the flood and one was to educate the renters on our, our current rental inspection program, which involves calling the code office. I would like to see that get done as quickly as possible when it's still pending, but it has been for a long time.
With regard to the, the pending list, I thought I understood that K-State had, was not pursuing their next plan. I thought they kind of, I read that somewhere, Collegium somewhere. Is that right? Dennis, you're shaking your head.
Strategic planning?
Yeah.
They're just going to do a small update with the last information I saw.
Okay. Is that a 2025 year still?
Yeah, that's still the one that we're working on.
You think it? Okay. Or maybe the, maybe it's more earlier one that they suspended or delayed. Okay. What are the chances of short-term rentals ever rising to the surface?
It's, so one of the things that we're working on, it'll actually, and Katie can correct me if I'm wrong, or other staff, but I, we will, you know, because of the regulations, we'll need to include it in the UDO or the development code. So it'll be a portion of that. So we're working on incorporating that. Now, if we want to, and, and, so we'll spend a lot of extra time on that. There's probably likely some supplemental actions that we'll have to take as well from a licensing and an ordinance more than likely. But Katie, you want to add to that?
Sure. This is Katie Jackson, City Attorney. Ron is correct that we have to incorporate the use of a short-term rental throughout the Manhattan Development Code. So that's in progress and being done and will be presented as part of the Manhattan Development Code when that chap, when those chapters come to you. The second part is doing some kind of license or permit or something like that to, so that we have a report of who is using their, their units that way and that we can verify that they're paying the taxes or whatever. And that would be in an ordinance that's likely to be in the city code book. And we have a draft of that. We are working on it. We're making sure that it will be consistent with where the Manhattan Development Code ends up. So I think those things are well in progress and you'll start to see those things come up with, when the Manhattan Development Code comes before you soon.
That's one piece of it, but the other piece is that they need to pay transient guest tax like bread and breakfast do.
Yes. That would be part of-
That's in the development code? No.
No. That would be in that city code ordinance, the separate action that we would do in addition to the development code. And so as part of that, we would address the transient guest tax issue.
So it'll be done by the end of the year?
Well, we are presenting the Manhattan Development Code, the chapters that contain short-term rentals all summer. I don't know if the city code part is scheduled yet, but I would imagine that if, when the development code's adopted, we'd like to have that, that code and permit done so that it's in effect when the development code goes into effect.
I'd like to request one of our, that to be a topic on one of our work session agendas, just so we know more about it. Except what other city, that's all we know, is what other cities are doing. And so I'd like to have a discussion about what the Manhattan administration is doing, considering, pushing, whatever. And that would apply to then Airbnb. So actually, there are two items on here. Are they different? Wouldn't you just say short-term rentals slash Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay. And so we could take off number five.
And I had one other question. We talked about, you know, the budget process and I guess, you know, since the legislature changed, we have to do, are we going to change this budget planning agenda so that it goes past July or?
We may have to. So that was, so we're waiting, we know what the legislation said, so there was some original legislation, incentive bill 13 that was approved, and there was some follow-on legislation, which I think was, I'm not sure, it was House Bill 2080 or something like that. But anyway, it, it had some further instructions and changed some of the dates that were in the original bill. So essentially, and it's a little bit different for, actually, it will take effect for this budget year, in this calendar year, and then there's other implementations for '22 when you do the '23 budget. But essentially, you know, normally we get the valuation notice from the county around the end of June, end of May, some, something like that. So the, the county clerk has to give us that notice by, by June 15th now. And that basically just sets what that, from a valuation increase, here's what the revenue neutral rate would be in property taxes. And then it's a little bit interesting because it's not real clear whether this is actually giving us more time. On the end, it looks like it's giving us more time, but right now, the legislation has a date of July 15th. And that July 15th is the date we have to notify the county clerk that we intend to exceed that revenue neutral rate. So normally, you know, we're publishing towards the end of July for our August public hearing. So it, I guess it depends on how detailed that needs to be. Do we have to actually say we're going to be 1.15 mils higher than, than that tax neutral rate? Is that what that notice is? Or do we just have to give a general indication that we, we're going to likely be higher than what was, than we were noticed? And we're going to have a public hearing on that. And those dates are no sooner than August 20th and no later than September 20th. So it's, we're kind of waiting for some more, what's the interpretation of that from the department administration? So it's not real sure that we'll be changing too much from our typical budget calendar because it looks like we have to have some kind of indication, even though we now don't have to certify the budget till October 1st based on the, the current legislation. So-
But essentially, when they say revenue neutral, because you, you mentioned mils, but what they're saying is dollar amount.
Yes.
So if we kept a flat mill levy, assessments went up, I mean essentially, you know-
It's a lower mill.
We have raised the taxes.
Right.
So, you know, that's almost a given on Jul- July 15th. I mean, my, you know, my particular expectation is we can keep the mill levy flat, but I don't have an expectation we can keep spending flat because that would just be dumb.
Right. And so what-
We would not be capturing new growth and everything.
Right.
It's just crazy in my mind.
So what we don't know is what are the details of that July 15th date? If it's just a general indication that we're likely going to exceed it and we're going to hold a public hearing between August 20th and September 20th? What it is?
Then I think then we're okay.
We're going to have a hearing and the county's going to notice it.
Yeah.
Unless we're going to drop the mill by a mil. Because it's roughly about $600,000 in, in growth at a 1%.
Yeah, I personally just don't see that as a viable option.
Yeah.
My goal is keep a flat mill levy, but not, not try to, you know, reduce the-
In this year, we don't have to actually say what it's going to be. It's just not going to be revenue neutral.
Okay.
To have the hearing. So that notice will go out, the county will notice it, they'll schedule it. It's really the comfort level that you all have that citizens may be calling, asking either the city or the county, what is your budget? I hear you have a hearing. We may not necessarily have the answer by then. Now, we can work towards that if that's what you all would like to do, but that mill levy today is around 48, 49 for the city. It would drop by a full mil. And that's where we'd have to basically be. But if we know we're not going to be there, it's a notice, hearing scheduled, then you, then you adopt a, a actual budget at the hearing, but it's set for later.
Yeah, to, to me, that makes sense because there is some advantage. If we don't have to finish it till one October, we can maybe do some better planning on some of the things.
Right.
I mean, that's the way I looked at it, but-
You're just going to create a level of confusion to the public by noticing up these hearings and not necessarily having the answers. This, this, I mean, our staff met with league staff last Friday. They got more clarification on what we have to do for the '22 budget. It is, right Ron, it's different for then what we have to do for the '23 budget, but that notice by July 15th is more than likely going to be out there unless again, you're fine lowering the mill levy by a full mil.
So did that pass?
And then the other wildcard in there is the RCPD budget. Ron and I have talked about that because we don't control that. You know, the law board will set that, but maybe they should have a public hearing on that if, if it goes up. And, and I don't think the law specifically lays that out. So that's something for, you know, Linda, you're, you're running the law board these days. I don't know if you've discussed that there or not.
So I think that's one of the issues.
We don't have enough information yet enough in the legislation.
We're not aware that there were any, any part of the legislations that were passed that, that basically said, you know, taxing jurisdictions. There was, there were some of the small, like fire districts and some of those that were exempted. So there were, there were no suggestions that if you had a different date by which you operated by, which is RCPD's case, then you need to pay attention to these. But the, the issue is, is that RCPD, the Riley County Law Board is not a taxing entity. However, they are the ones that set that budget. So if, for example, they were going to have a 1.5 mil levy increase in property taxes for their next budget, it, it's too late for either the city or the county to include that in its public hearing that it could effectuate a change in that budget because it had already been passed if we follow the statutory dates. So one, one aspect could be that, that can they voluntarily go by the new dates, same, same as we are, so that they could issue that notice for their public hearing and that hold that effect? So it's, it's a complicated, I think it's probably the, there's going to be a intent answer and then there's going to be a legal answer. And it kind of depends on what you want to do. I'm not sure that there's a, would be a willingness to do that short of, you know, I don't know if an agey opinion or something else would come about, but having either the city or the county hold the public hearing that effectually changes that particular budget is, is not relevant because they, neither one of those bodies, by the time the law board passes that budget, can affect that budget. And it's not a part, it is a part of our levy, but you have no authority of it. So historically, what has happened is you've asked me to make cuts to compensate for it. But I think it's something that should be discussed anyway. And I was looking at writing kind of a background memo to, to you all and, and see if you want to send that on to the law board and the county commission.
I, I don't know. I mean, has this been passed? Is that what we were already talking about? I don't think it has been passed yet, or I think it's all-
Yes, the governor has signed the legislation, so-
Okay. So there is discussion about that.
Yeah. What we don't have is necessarily all the implementing guidance, although-
Right.
The league did hold some, some indication about what they're hearing from the department administration.
Yeah. I think, you know, having a public hearing about this is not something I'm overly concerned about. I think the public should be privy, and they always are welcome to give us any information at any time regarding budgeting. That's why we do a public hearing and have so many meetings and televise them and have as many discussions as possible. So I think delaying it would be, work just fine for me. And having that conversation with the public, I feel, is pretty important. But as far as, this is a similar discussion we had when they were doing the property lid, all of that. And it, although it was, it had some limitations on our discussion about what we can and cannot do, the public was very well aware, aware of it. And we didn't really have to go to any kind of hearing or do anything of that sort or vote that they were requesting at that time. Whatever the league decides or guides us, I think it's probably one of those testing years to see what happens. But our budget is not going to be dependent on the public itself. Our policies and budget are going to be impacted by city and RCPD and library and county and USD 383 and all of that. So I don't think our budget would change dramatically in our discussions because of the date of where it is set.
Right.
I, I don't see that happening.
So the, you know, for this year, for next year, the, the process is very, the requirements are very similar to what we would normally do, which is a, which is a notice that we publish of our public hearing. And this is the same public hearing that we always publish. The difference is next year, the mailed notice goes into effect. So in, in '22 for the '23 budget is when the county clerk will be tasked with gathering everybody's proposed increases. And then they will do a direct mailing to every county resident and property taxpayer as to, here's the different hearings for the school board, the city, the county, and what they're proposing to do with this tax revenue neutral rate.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea because honestly, we're the ones who always have to take the brunt of all of this. I want them, I want a discussion to be about school board, county and RCPD and everything else. I think that's probably a comprehensive picture. It may not seem, you know, as far as mailing everybody a notice and doing all of that might be seeming a bit much, but I think it's, it's worth getting that public input. That is one of the pieces that lacks so much in budgets for, for all of the taxing agencies. And I'm surprised the USD 383 is part of that because they do the LOBs and the sales tax ballots. They don't necessarily, I don't know, do they increase their own taxes, property taxes or mill levies? Because that's through their bond issues and LOBs, I thought. Right? They do mill levy.
Yeah, they have their, their-
They have their mill levies.
They have several different property tax funds.
But yeah, and that's very different than the way we do it.
Yeah.
So, okay. Well, I think probably wait to see what guidance there is.
We have several property tax funds as well.
Yeah. All right.
It's going to be a confusing document. And, and really, it's, it's different than, as the mayor indicated, you know, the, it's a dollar amount as opposed to what a mil equals. So, and when you're spreading that over multiple agencies, it's really going to be confusing. But, I mean, that's, that's the law that was passed, so that's what we have to, have to go by. So I don't know that it'll change our budget calendar, getting back to your original question, that much for this year because we kind of have to be ready. But it does give us a little bit more time for which we want to conclude that and actually certify the budget if we want to. So that's something we'll be looking for as, as we move forward in, in some of those The other thing relative to that is I know Commissioner Morris, you had, and relative to the planning chart was, are there some fifth Tuesdays that we were going to plan on meeting on? There are, there's a, a couple coming up. There's, there's one in-
June?
June 29th. And we, right now, we do have one scheduled, but that could move to, there isn't much on the July first legislative meeting. So one of the things we've been trying to do with the development code is look for, for other openings. So that would be one. There's another one in August is a fifth Tuesday, and November 30th is a fifth Tuesday, which is the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. So those are, those are the other two months besides June that have fifth Tuesdays.
So that would be August 31st?
Yes, August 31st. Now, we also have not planned to have a work session on August 10th. That's kind of our dead week, if you will, before school starts that we've traditionally not taken, not had one. So if you didn't have one then and you wanted to have one on that fifth Tuesday instead, you know, it's kind of depend on where, what, what our plate looks like at that time from that standpoint. So, but if there are commissioners that are wanting to schedule some things and, and want to target those, then the sooner we know that, the better. Generally, we don't have Tuesdays for meetings, but we had targeted the 29th.
And then November 30th. I'm just looking, I mean, sometimes we hold off till two or three weeks ahead of time and make a decision.
Right.
I'd like for us to make a decision. So if we wanted to travel or see grandchildren or do something, we would have a block of time that we could do that.
Sure.
Otherwise, we're here every Tuesday and it'd be worse if we were county commissioners and had to meet every Monday and Thursday. That'd be the worst case.
Right.
But, I mean, we did have a break several weeks ago and I, it was a wonderful thing. Made me start thinking about the future. Okay. So probably not August 31st then.
Well, I, it's, it's, we don't have anything currently scheduled. So as we have these meetings and review the planning chart, that's one that we hadn't planned to, even though we were taking the 10th off. So again, it's kind of depending on what's, what's surfacing and what needs to be, be brought forward. Some of the legislative, certain legislative meetings have been lighter than others, and so we've moved some of those work session topics to there. Obviously, we're doing the strategic plan, we're doing the development code, those lend themselves to more meetings. So we'd rather do those when you regularly meet than have a special meeting.
What about May 31st? Did you already say that?
Uh, May 31st is-
Oh, it's a Monday. Sorry about that.
Yeah. I think there's only four in May.
Okay. I tested him earlier this week. I said, we've got one in May. He said, after a while, he said, no, we don't. Okay. I don't know what I was, I think I was looking at all the Mondays in May.
Did you want me to look?
Well, I don't know-
Is there anything else on the planning chart?
I don't know if we need to go over each item on the planning chart, everybody's got one, so, you know, if you had a question, you could mention it. If not, there's not really any value in just reading it. We, we all have it.
A while back, I remember seeing President Myers listed as for a K-State update, and that has disappeared. So I assume, you know, but I just think we need an update from K-State so we know what their budget and, because they're being cut every year. And so we know there are issues there, but I think it would help us in our budget process if we had a clue what that meant. And I know they're recruiting like heck and trying to retain and at the same time, their budgets are cut year after year. So I'd like to-
So the-
If I need to get that information privately, I can, but-
Well, I don't think we've ever gotten it, I don't think we've ever gotten that information as part of the president's presentation to you all.
Okay.
That has always been the, what's happening on the North Campus corridor and, and here's where we're going with that, is the tradition of, of the past presidents.
We know what we're doing on the North Campus corridor and we know we're paying for it. So that's not, to me, that's not an update from K-State.
But I think that was what was scheduled for him to appear on.
I see.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, so if everybody's happy with the way the planning chart looks, then we'll just move on. What other items do you have, Ron?
So I know you got some PowerPoints for tonight. And then item on the consent agenda is the seeking authorization to start back up the housing study RFQ. The last time we did that, Commissioner Morris was appointed to serve as the commissioner, to be on the selection committee for those RFQs. So just wanted to reiterate that that's still the intent, so.
I would still be interested.
Sure.
But that doesn't mean, doesn't preclude others.
We wanted to verify that. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, one of the things that would expire with the mask ordinance would be our temporary city operations resolution. And then just kind of get some feedback from you on, you know, your comfort level with occupancy in the meetings. You know, one of the things that has been kind of interesting in this whole process a year ago from now, we had all these state plans and stuff about, you know, here's the plan to reopen and the conditions for reopening. And most of those were centered on what the rate is of positive tests as well as the hospital occupancy rates. And if we were going by those same percentages right now, everything would be wide open. But I can tell you that nobody is. You know, we're one of the few legislative commissions that have been meeting in person at still limited capacity. A lot of them have just started to, but they all still have some limited capacity. And so I guess the question would be, is the, your all's comfort level, nobody really has implemented a post-vaccination plan from, from a reopening standpoint. The CDC guidance is still very cautious, even if you've been vaccinated. So it's, most of it is recommended as opposed to mandated. And so some of those, that feedback would be important. I would just point out that, you know, you can go anywhere in the community right now and there's no limits on gatherings. You can go to a full restaurant and everybody eating with their mask off and there's, there's no restrictions against that other than your own decision whether you want to participate in that or not. And so do we go from 29 in attendance to 100%? Or do you want to go 50 or 75? I know K-State just reopened their outdoor baseball to 50%. The football field for graduation, I think, is still based on about 25% for both the high school and the college graduations, which is outside. And, and even, and we were at the chamber board meeting today. That was the first time they were back in, in person. And we met at the Farm Bureau where everybody was still very socially distanced and spread out. So it's not just governments that are still having some of the hesitancy to do some of the things. And so that's kind of what, you know, and obviously, if we're going to still do some restrictions here, I'm looking at trying to, how do I balance that with the rest of the organization? Right now, we are bringing some limited public into our conference rooms for consultants to review plans and that sort of thing, but it's still limiting that. So is it, does, do things become just more recommended as far as things go? So I'd, I'd be interested in some of your opinions about, you know, and I know there's been a dis- So one of the things that has been a challenge for us is the, there's a lot of work involved in, with the restrictions. One of the reasons that we have to do the online virtual public comments is because we're restricting access. If we don't have that restriction, we don't have to do a lot of that work. I noticed there was a public comment today that really wasn't real relevant to any of the agenda items, and I dare say I doubt that individual would come to that podium and give that same public comment. So he, you know, certainly wouldn't list his address and stuff. Maybe he would, I don't know. But there's a lot of junk like that that occurs when you have this kind of online process as opposed to if it would be in person. So it's just kind of, that's the kind of feedback we're kind of looking at, but it, there's a lot of extra work by the clerk's office in organizing all of that as well as the, you know, the online type of thing. So, you know, are you, I've had some commenters, when we're going to go back around the table in the briefing and, and that sort of thing. So we'd be interested in feedback about that as well as, I guess the other thing related to the, kind of the temporary resolution that we did would be the, some of you had had discussions about the one or two readings of ordinances and whether or not you want to go back to two readings of ordinance regardless, or is there, you know, developing a, a policy for that? Right now, we're in a kind of a hybrid on that policy. You know, it's, it's one reading unless a commissioner does certain things. So I know I covered a lot there, sorry, but we don't, we don't have a lot of time to prepare- We don't, we don't have a lot of time to prepare for that in order to get two readings and that kind of stuff in.
I have a text that says, "What happened to the video?" It's about 15 minutes old. Is everything a go? Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
I said, "I have a text that says, uh, 'What happened to the video from 15 minutes ago.'" So I'm just checking to see if whatever it was then has corrected itself or if it's still an issue. Thank you, I interrupted, I know, but if you'd check, please.
It's broadcasting right now.
Okay, we're good, thank you.
So I was, I, I don't mind going back to a higher capacity. I don't mind if it's, I mean, this is what it looks like at 29. This is most evenings, we don't have many people here. Even when we have a, a big issue, um, lately, we have not. But, um, it's always good to have public comment. And I think this has provided a different avenue for that. I don't mind looking at 50 or 75%, but even if we go there, I don't know if we have, that probably keeps everything else the same as far as Zoom and everything. So all it, does all of that go away only when we're at 100% capacity?
We just need to be, I think it, it, I, I don't know, I'll let Katie expand on it. But we need to be able to handle, if we don't do it that way, then we have to accommodate them in the auditorium or some other method, don't we?
So the Attorney General's Office adopted rules for, um, remote meetings early in the pandemic. So obviously, things have changed a little. But the rule says that if you have limited capacity in any way in your room, it doesn't give any percentages about that, then that you have to also provide, um, you have to broadcast it in some way. So if we say 75%, we'd still need to be broadcasting every meeting the way that we have been, include, like, like we have adapted this meeting to be broadcast. If we return to normal capacity, then we're no longer under those rules.
Right. And the reason I bring that up is we don't know, we're not going, uh, the recommendations have been, um, if you're at, um, 60, 70% vaccination rate in your community. I don't know when we'll be there. I know that by May 26th, May 16th, we won't have the face mask ordinance, ordinance in place. But I also don't know, um, how many of our staff or public have been vaccinated or not when they come into. So I just, I'm still a little cautious about that. I know, um, we had that meeting, uh, with community leaders as well as Kansas State University. They're still at certain percentages, they're not at 100% for, uh, most of their events and such. The reason I hesitate even for, for us is most of our meetings don't just last an hour and then we're done. They usually go on for more than two hours and, um, up to six hours sometimes. So I, I just, uh, I'm still cautious, but I'll, you know, look, look to others for feedback on how they feel about it. But it's the unknown about getting to that 50, 60, 70% of vaccinations in our community. I don't know who has been vaccinated or who hasn't when they come through our buildings and how long they're going to be sitting in our room and doing all of that. As much as I want to get back to normal, I do want to have a regular briefing session when we come here and can eat together and talk and discuss like we usually do and build those relationships. I do miss that part of it. But I, um, well, you heard from me, I think that, that's about where I stand. I do want to get back to regular two readings, though. I, I don't want to have to pick and choose which one gets two and which one just goes on one. I think it's always best when we do a first reading and then if the public sees it and then realizes, "Oh, there, I need to speak up about this." There were several agenda items in the past that have, we have changed our minds on second readings. So I want to give, bring that back to the way it used to be. So that's my feedback.
So, so what exactly goes away at 100% capacity? We're not going to stop televising on the TV or Facebook. Is it just the, the Zoom access aspect that stops? Or what exactly would stop at 100%?
So, so it's really our, our, right now, because we, we have to provide an alternative for folks to be able to provide official public comment to you other than coming here to that podium, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'll let Katie answer.
Okay.
That's why I was looking at her.
We're not required to accept public comment, that's not, that's not part of it. What, the difference is, so your normal city commission meeting, the way that we broadcast it, it would comply with the rules regardless. Where we have seen the difference is in meetings like the briefing session, which is a meeting that's not normally broadcast because of the way it's set up and the way it's handled. So we've had to extend that same requirement to broadcast to all the city advisory board and other meetings. So that's where you see the difference. It's not as much in your meetings because you have a history of a legislative and work sessions being broadcast. It's your briefing session and then all the other boards and committees. So if they return to normal capacity, if this room returns to that, then that obligation for those other boards and committees to also be broadcast in some way is removed.
So we could stop broadcasting this six to seven o'clock...
That's correct.
Hour.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I, I just don't think that if we open this up to 100%, which must be, what, 118 or 16 or something, or what's, if this 29 is a fourth, I'm guessing...
It includes the hallway, too.
They're only 30...
The foyer.
...here.
Okay, so that's, okay, so I doubt, yeah, doubt if there's going to be 100 and some people ever show up for anything that I see coming up on our agenda anytime soon. So, um, I would like us to consider going to 100% here after May 16th, June 1st, something, whatever. Make it a little bit easier. And, and it's, it's the consortic... So if somebody wants to comment currently about something on the agenda night, they would have had to have done it before five o'clock or something, right?
Four.
Four o'clock or something. So, um, so how, if we open it up to 100%, how would that be affected?
So when we added the way that people could submit public comment on the city website, that was something that we did just to encourage involvement and to provide another avenue for the public to participate. We're not required to do that, that's something that we did because we're facilitating that. We can make the decision, um, as staff and with the governing bodies' direction on whether you want to remove that public comment form that's on the website. You know, um, individuals can still come and speak or they can email you, those avenues still exist. But we, we only added that just to add another way for people to comment. That was our, our choice.
And, and is that the thing that requires a certain amount of extra effort that we'd like to avoid if we could?
Yes, because it takes, uh, each item has to be set up individually before it's posted to the website. And then we have to download at the end of four o'clock, we have to download all those. So it is, it is very time consuming. It takes approximately a half a day just to prepare, uh, the format for the website just for, to, uh, for the public comments before we put the packet out.
Wow, okay.
And it also is officially part of the public record, where the anonymous, the other emails you just normally get aren't.
Yeah.
One thing that we could do, Commissioner, to still allow the ability for someone to submit something to the commission is we, we have on the, uh, website the ability to just submit an online form that goes to all five of you. And we could put something on the webpage that said, if you have, if you want to submit something to the commission about the, the agenda, as opposed to what Brenda and her staff has to do and coordinate each item and all that stuff and create the form each week, we could do that so that there's still an option on the website for people to just fill out a form and all five of you get it and they can provide that written feedback as opposed to...
That's an excellent suggestion because it still leaves the communications open, but it removes the staff burden. So I'm 100%.
Isn't that what we used to do, or used to?
Yep, a- a- and it would be different from a public comment policy with our agenda that then we would also have to publish to the agenda and it would be more of a, the public has the ability to send a direct communication to you all. It's an email that you get that's separate from the clerk's office's process.
That ability's always been there, but it's not been highlighted.
It's not, it's not that e- easy to find.
Right.
So that would be less onerous on the city clerk.
I like that. And as far as the occupancy, I'm, I'm ready to just, you know, on the 17th, we need to just go back to like it was. Because the other problem is if, if we try to limit it here, and I'd mentioned this to Ron earlier, because I got a couple of emails on this topic, people concerned about when the rec center's open, are we going to have different policies for each one? And then we really have to be consistent citywide. I mean, I'm talking the Douglas Center and the new schools and, and all the various things we do. So, so we either got to, we either got to go all the way or, you know, not at all. And it looks like we should go all the way. And, and I, and I think, based on what, you know, I've heard from the, you know, health department, that yes, maybe not everybody's going to get vaccinated, but the opportunity is going to have been there. You know, clearly by the 16th. I mean, at this point, you know, they're not getting a lot of people to show up. So now it's just a matter of, I guess, selling the idea of, of vaccines because people are going to make a choice to not get it. And if they don't get it, then they can make a choice to not come to the meeting, you know, also. So that's where I am there.
Well, we wouldn't know who is vaccinated or not.
Oh, I know, and I'm not interested in trying to figure that out.
So that's, that's why, that's why I'm saying the capacity, like, because we're not going to gauge who has it or not. That, that was the caution piece.
Right, so it's, so it's, you know, individual risk on that. And then the, the other point on this, uh, one reading, I, I like that hybrid idea because the reason we came up with one reading was for some of these routine, non-controversial things. And it just makes it easier for the staff. I mean, that cuts down on, on work, which I'm in favor of. I, I think those that, uh, you know, and Usha, you know, your point's well taken. If there, if there's certain ones like this that are controversial, people don't know about, then one of us can easily say, "Hey, we want a second reading and we can, we can revisit it." And I, I think that's appropriate for a number of them. Like when we fought issues like smoking regulations and, and even e-scooters, certain, certain topics like that, for sure. But there's a good 75% of these, that it's just not worth having a second reading to do.
No, I understand what you're saying. I think some things that we don't think are controversial or important. For example, that's how the Peace Memorial Auditorium came off of the second reading. That's how the Roundabout that we have now at CNIC, uh, came off of second reading and had so many discussions afterwards. So some of these things that we as five commissioners may not, um, see more in depth than to, uh, somebody on the, uh, in the community finds it important and then we end up discussing it even more. So I think that's why, not because of what the five of us think as far as controversial, but there are some elements to some of the, uh, agenda items after we discuss them and then they hear it in the radio, on the radio or see it in the paper and say, "Wait a minute, I didn't know they were talking about that." So that, that's why, most of the things that, like I said, we may not be concerned about, but it's, it touches somebody else in the public and therefore we have another discussion. Peace Memorial Auditorium, the Roundabout, two, two examples that came out of those second meetings.
What is the capacity of this room for seating? We see 13 seats right here. So is that times four?
So what's on the back wall there? This was set up for the social distancing guideline.
173.
173 is the capacity of this room.
Yeah.
Now, we don't, we don't normally set it up with that many chairs. I think our normal setup's about 70, maybe? Just so we, I mean, we've never, we've never put 173 chairs in this room.
But if we have like a Veterans Day luncheon, let's say, if they have it here. I mean, now they probably have it somewhere in the Peace Memorial Auditorium. So there is capacity for more. So that's, that's, I think, why the 173 might apply or not.
I am willing to put it off till May 16th, keep what we're doing until then. That's when our ordinance exp- two ordinances expire. I, uh, we don't know what this variant's going to do either and that'll give us some time to make additional assessment. But we have never, we, well, maybe once, I don't know. I, I see people in the hallway sometimes, but I can't say that all these chairs are full. And if we doubled the number of chairs, we'd still be under the 25%. So, you know, we could add more chairs as people come if we need them. But we haven't been pushed during all of COVID with a big crowd here. We have trouble getting people to come, let alone discourage them. So by not having, you know, things that they come to, so, uh, that's how I feel about it, certainly May 16th.
I appreciate the feedback. So, I mean, obviously, it just, isn't just you, it's your advisory boards and that other committees and groups that are meeting. Some, some, we've encouraged our liaisons to have the same conversation. So a few of our boards are meeting in person, a couple are hybrid, uh, a bunch are still virtual.
And I think that's fine.
And, and... But a lot of them are moving back, obviously. They, they're, they're struggling with the same issues as you all.
I think I heard last night, I listened to the planning board today, I think they're, uh, getting ready to come back in person. And so I think it'll take care of itself, it seems to be. But I don't mind broadcasting it either.
Sure.
Giving them the option to do that.
Yeah, is, is there plans to eliminate the broadcasting of the boards? I mean, I, I really like the archived meetings because people that, you know, want to go back and look at something.
No, I don't think they'd eliminate that, they might eliminate the Zoom part.
The, there'll probably always still be a virtual option for people to attend via Zoom. Things come up and, and so, so we intend to continue to allow people to, to come in, consultants, staff, uh, commissioners, if they're out of town.
Traveling.
But, uh, prior to the pandemic, the only meetings we ever broadcasted on Channel 3 and Box Cast were, I believe it was the Planning Board, um...
Airport Board.
Airport Advisory Board and...
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec, that was about it. And, and the Law Board did. Uh, we didn't broadcast the briefing sessions, things like Bike Ted Advisory Committee, Food and Farm Council Committee, um, the Audit Committee, even Social Service Advisory Board, all those, those were never broadcast. They were open to the public, anyone can come to this city hall and watch those meetings. But those, all, those 26, you know, extra 20 boards weren't broadcasting their meetings. So that's the conversation, I guess, of, do you want to continue to have that staff liaison and that board work to create the, the recorded and live streamed environment?
I've been very happy with the Discrimination Task Force and the Recovery Task Force and not having to come, not having that, those large groups come in here and then add the public who are interested. That would, would, I believe, overpower the room.
So the challenge we have as a, as a staff, I mean, it's, the liaisons have done a pretty good job of, of learning how to conduct a virtual meeting. The challenge becomes when they have to conduct a live meeting and a virtual meeting simultaneously. That's very difficult and, and really pretty impossible for one person to do. So we would need additional staff to be able to do both. So that's, that's the challenge we have. We haven't really talked about that internally as to what that looks like from a, from our perspective, from a, a workload, but, you know, that's certainly good feedback.
Yes, yeah, I would think that, you know, I would like to see us continue broadcasting them, that's not a problem. But, but I understand, it, it's like trying to teach a class both ways. I've, I've tried that, it's, it's very difficult and, and takes, takes too much talent to make that work. So I'd like to see us continue broadcasting them so people can tune in and watch it. But trying to run it Zoom the same time, and, and I'm interested in, you know, how much pain it is for the staff because you've got a lot of things on your plate and, and the more we add to it, that's going to cause us to have to hire more staff, I don't want to see that happen, so...
We are in a COVID period and we have COVID money also. And if so, I'm just saying, continue doing what you're doing till May 16th.
Well, yeah, this discussion is what happens after May 16th.
Yeah.
I think it's been good to have the strategic planning discussion, the diversity discussion and the recovery task force discussion online. If they do meet in person, I mean, if that's the route we end up going with, uh, full capacity, I understand, you know, how the Zoom meetings would go away and we wouldn't need to do that anymore. However, I have benefited a lot from those meetings, not having to attend them in, in person, but knowing that they're coming on and then knowing that the public has also access to view them regardless of where they are at that time. So that'll be different. I don't know if we would have those meetings in this room or if we, if they would be in a different room or a larger room. And I don't know how many of those participants are comfortable coming back in person either, uh, to some capacity.
Well, we've taken a lot of time, but I, I do appreciate the feedback and as you have thoughts, if you want to send them to us, that'd be great. There's a number of meetings coming up for, uh, that are on your mail folder intro that you could respond to if you could. Other than that, uh, there may be a few updates, Mayor, but, uh, Commissioner comments might be more appropriate with the time we got left.
Anybody have anything else with those? Dennis, you got some, got some hot button items?
The only thing to add on that conversation is the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force will be meeting Thursday, 6:00 PM at the K-State Student Union Ballroom. So that will not be on Zoom or on public access. So that will be an in-person meeting only. And we put the agenda for that meeting in your hard mail folder that should be at your dais tonight. That's it.
And part of that was threaded by the co-chairs desiring to really have an opportunity to break out into smaller groups and have roundtable discussions on specific topics and then come back together. And that's really hard to do virtually.
Usually, there's a theme, is this, this doesn't show anything about a theme.
No, the overall, the theme is meeting in the subgroup. So there's, they've identified five different subgroups. And as Ron was saying, that that will be the focus, is to get down in kind of some detail among the subcommittee members or subgroups.
Gotcha. Gotcha. They need some time.
Just to be clear on that, people might say, well, you can do breakout sessions on there, except you can't view the breakout sessions, and that takes away from the open meetings, uh.
Yeah, you can, you can view breakouts on Zoom. Anyway. Oh, one at a time, if you're in it, I guess, that's true. Okay. Um, I noticed in this, uh, newspaper that the city's, uh, the sales tax, was that the eleven and a half percent? Would someone address that in January compared to twenty-twenty?
Yeah, I think that was overall proceeds, um, uh, were up compared to this same time, uh, last year.
Last year, yeah.
For that month.
So that's not, I mean, usually, usually we hear when it's down.
I think one of the things that was relative to that was this was January sales, so...
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there was, there was, seemed, there was quite a bit of difference in the, um, some of the special districts, but compared to the previous year, clearly.
So that'll help make up for some of the months...
And we're still ahead a little bit. Good trend to be.
We are on a new year.
Well, finance sends us, uh, you know, the tax report every month. We get it, so.
I know.
It's, it's looking pretty good. I think we got some improvements, but, uh, it's going to be interesting to see, you know, some of the things are going to look like an increase because we're comparing, you know, like March, April, May, in the middle of COVID with now, and it's going to look like a big spike. You really ought to go back two years and compare it to two thousand nineteen to get a better feeling for, you know, just how good it is.
We just usually hear when it's down. I wanted to celebrate that it's up eleven percent. And, and today's Wall Street Journal, there was an article about, um, young, uh, that half of all U.S. adults have at least had one vaccine dose. And I think, um, but now the younger people are showing up in hospitals. And, uh, so it stressed the more people get vaccinated, the fewer infections there will be. And more than a quarter of the U.S. population has now had two shots. The country administered an average of three point two million doses, uh, over the last week, a day, over the last week. So that's pretty major. But they're cautioning about relaxing prevention efforts and loosened restrictions as this variant. And, uh, there have even been some new cases here of the variant, I think, in the last couple of days. So we need to still, much as we want to be free, take our masks off, we need to continue to be cautious.
Okay. Have, have anything else? Or we'll take a break here before we do the legislative meeting.
Sure. I just wanted to say, oh, is that the Fort Riley usually has a community, um, partnership gathering, and they haven't had it last year, but they used to have it in the past. That's how we got the assault, uh, commodity MOU when, um, Garrison Commander Don Lawrence was there. So they had one this time, uh, last week on, uh, April fifteenth. Ron was there with me. They took great notes. I have my own notes, but they, they should be in your mail folder for you to review. I was in the medical group with John Ambrose, um, Amber Willem from the, uh, chamber, um, Billy Rose, um, Bradley Gregory, and Greg McKinney, our county commissioner. That was the first time I met him and had a good conversation with him. So some of the three things that we narrowed the medical group down to is having the license reciprocity program in place as well as looking at, um, purchasing, uh, items, whether it's gloves, whatever it is there, if we can buy them in bulk together, whichever one has the lower price on it. And training, maybe we can use EMS training grounds or CPR, whatever other training methods, uh, training sessions together so we're not duplicating services. Again, uh, most of that information will be in your mail folder. Uh, the community leaders in K-State, we had our meeting at one thirty on Monday, uh, every other Monday now. One of the main things that came out of that is, uh, we have about twenty, nineteen percent or so, I don't know, twenty percent may be vaccinated. Uh, the, it has decreased about the number of people getting vaccines. So trying to do a public campaign, uh, to get more people to take the vaccine because we should be at, uh, sixty to seventy percent to be, uh, at a hundred percent capacity where everybody can open and do things normal. Uh, so that's one of the things, one of their goals. The Chamber is having their legislative coffee on April thirtieth. Hopefully, everybody can go or watch. I think it's virtual. Sorry about that. Secretary Tolan will also be doing a luncheon with the Chamber online, I believe, at May, on May fourth at eleven-thirty. That's it.
Okay, on that note, let's take a little bit of a break here, and we've got five minutes before we start the meeting. All right?
Whereas travel, hospitality, and recreation reflect the power of travel in Manhattan, Kansas, and our community's economic prosperity and...
Whereas the coronavirus pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with staggering lows...
I think we're right at, uh, about the seven P M. hour, so it's time to start the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, April twentieth. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a few proclamations to begin the meeting with. And the first one is, uh, you know, the Arbor Day proclamation, which is always a good one for Manhattan because we're known as the Tree City. And so, Brenda, if you'd read that proclamation, I appreciate it.
Whereas trees are essential to life. Trees reduce heating and cooling costs, clean and purify the air, provide shelter and food for urban wildlife, and in planting and taking care of our trees, an invaluable contribution is being made to the lives of future generations. The City of Manhattan's program replaces declining and defective trees as well as beginning tree planting in new developments. This dedication to tree planting will ensure a viable urban forest resource for the future of Manhattan. Manhattan has been recognized as a Tree City USA for the past forty-four years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, Lynn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the City of Manhattan and urge all citizens to support efforts to, to, um, protect and manage our trees and woodlands. The Arbor Day ceremony this year will be held at the Seven Dollars Elementary School. I urge all citizens to plant trees, take pride in them, and promote the well-being of our city, thus making it a better, more beautiful, and healthier place in which to live.
Okay, thank you. I wish Mother Nature would help us protect those fruit trees. The past couple of days, that hasn't done so well. They're not, not, she's not supporting Arbor Day this year. Okay, our second, uh, proclamation is, uh, National Travel and Tourism Week. And I think Karen, you've decided to do this one a little bit unique, and we're going to have a little video presented.
Yes, thanks to our, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, steering committee. We are still land, living in the land of virtual, and so we wanted to do our proclamation with your assistance in this, in this way.
Whereas travel, hospitality, and recreation reflect the power of travel in Manhattan, Kansas, and our community's economic prosperity and...
Whereas the coronavirus pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with staggering lows in twenty-twenty compared to twenty-nineteen and...
Whereas Manhattan's hospitality and travel industry cannot recover without the full return of business and leisure travel as well as meetings and events and...
Whereas our hospitality and tourism businesses represent small business and are the fabric that make Manhattan memorable and are grateful for our community's support throughout this pandemic crisis.
Whereas Manhattan continues to have the recognition as the number one most walkable meeting destination in Kansas with our multiple meeting offerings and...
Whereas visitors enjoy Manhattan as the gateway to the Flint Hills, experiencing the Flint Hills Discovery Center, the Bill Snyder Half Marathon, and multiple running events, zip lining, hiking and biking trails, hunting, fishing, golf, water parks, Sunset Zoo, the many offerings of Kansas State University and Big Twelve sports, and during the holidays, the Festival of Light Celebration and...
Whereas Manhattan presents unique and memorable offerings with scenic drives, with breathtaking views, exceptional dining, shopping, winery and breweries and...
Whereas the power of travel and tourism will revive Manhattan, Kansas, and is vital to move us forward into a more prosperous future.
Okay, and therefore, you know, I, Lynn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May second through eighth, twenty-twenty-one, as National Travel and Tourism Week and urge the citizens of Manhattan to join me in this special observance.
Thank you, Mayor.
So do you have anything you want to add to that, Karen?
Well, again, we thank Manhattan, the citizens of Manhattan, and our hospitality partners for making it through this very difficult year. And as we look forward to a bright future, as we come out of, out of, uh, the pandemic, we encourage everyone to celebrate what Manhattan has to offer. Thank you very much for proclaiming national tourism.
Okay, thank you. That was a unique one there. Okay, we have a third proclamation, which is April twenty-twenty-one is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we have a proclamation and we have, is that Elena? That to be here to, to, to receive that, and she'll, she'll give us a few words afterwards. So Brenda, could you please read that proclamation?
Whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. Sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. We know that in the United States alone, nearly one in five women, one in sixty-seven men, and nearly half of all transgender people have been raped at some time in their lives. That one in six boys and one in four girls is sexually abused before the age of eighteen. And that thirteen percent of transgender youth are usually sexually assaulted because they are transgender. For Black, Indigenous, immigrant, communities of color, as well as people with disabilities, the statistics are even more dire. Sexual harassment, assault, and abuse happen in all communities, and that includes online spaces. Consent and boundaries can be violated online in a number of ways. And the trauma of online abuse is all too real for many survivors. We can make a difference to ensure that our online communities are safe and respectful for everyone. Twenty-twenty-one marks the twentieth anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And the theme of this year's campaign is "We Can Build Safe Online Spaces." The campaign calls on us to create online spaces that are built on the foundational values of practicing consent, keeping kids safe, and supporting survivors. Together, we can build safe online spaces now and into the future. Now, therefore, Lynn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the City of Manhattan, encourage all citizens of Manhattan to display their commitment to eradicating sexual assault and devote themselves to support survivors of sexual assault in our community.
Okay, thank you. Elena, did you want to say a couple of words, please?
Hi, I'm Dr. Elena Colburn, and I'm a survivor advocate at Kansas State University. Um, I just want to say thank you on behalf of my office, um, for this proclamation. Um, the CARE Office stands for the Center of Advocacy, Response, and Education. Um, I'm really proud to work there. I'm really proud of the work that we do. We offer free and confidential advocacy to survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence, stop, excuse me, stalking and harassment, and we offer these services to all K-State students, faculty, and staff. So again, thank you very much for this award. It... So again, thank you very much for this award, it, I guess proclamation, it means a lot to us, and so I really appreciate your support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see, the next item on the agenda is Commissioner comments, so we'll begin with Commissioner Reddy.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to say, well, hopefully everybody's getting vaccinated. We need to be at 60 to 70% for us to be at full capacity and going back to everything normal as possible. I think we are at about 20 or 25%, maybe a little bit higher, so I just urge everybody to get vaccinated. We have a lot of vaccines, we have staff, we have volunteers, we have sites. I had my second one on Friday. Saturday, I was a little tired, I thought because I was overworked, but it must have been the shot, went to bed at 8:00 PM. But the next day, I didn't have any other symptoms, so I strongly urge everyone to do that. The next thing is Secretary Tolan will be speaking at a virtual luncheon, I believe, on May 4th at 11:30, and the Chamber Legislative Coffee this time will be virtual as well on April 30th. So if you, if you are interested, please contact your chamber so we can still know what's going on in Topeka and communicate your concerns and needs as well. With that, that's it for now. Thank you.
So Linda?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay, I just want to mention one thing. If you're following social media, the, you know, animal shelter's been posting a number of stories every day on the volunteers that are helping at the animal shelter, so if you get a chance to look at those, it's quite interesting, and I just want to give a shout out and thank you to everyone, the volunteers down in the shelter, because it makes a, makes a big difference on those animals, and there's pictures of them carrying all kinds of furry creatures, so if you need another buddy, there's plenty down there to adopt, so drop by the shelter, and they'll make you a good deal on a nice pet. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. The Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Now, one of the items on the general agenda is Commissioner to volunteer and serve on the Selection Committee for the Housing Marketing Analysis Policy Strategy Study. So is there any Commissioner would like to do that? Linda Morris?
Yes, uh-huh, thank you.
All right, then we'll make Linda Morris the rep on that one. So does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
I do. Commissioner Hassel, item nine, the Douglas Activity Center mural project. What is it going to take to get private sector money to pay for stuff like this? I know, because this is coming, this is some kind of tax dollars, or citizens are paying for this one, right? It's coming out of city tax money?
Yeah, I can, I can certainly, Eddie Eastus could comment on this, but as I recall, the Activity Centers, the REC Centers that we built, were all discussed to have some kind of art within it, and...
Yeah, I want to have art. I want the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation to pay for it, because they've got money to give for art projects that the city shouldn't have to be paying for. Eddie, come on up here, and, and I know there's some issue with the legality of it, but it's crazy that if they've got a pile of money to spend on public art, but there's some glitch in our statutes, state laws, or something that prevents us from taking their money, feeding it through our Arts Advisory Board or something to approve it, to make sure it's not outlandish and crazy, and get some of this public art paid for privately. Go ahead, Eddie.
Well, I'll just comment, yes, the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board has been working on a donated art policy. It's been a while in coming. We do have a couple of projects that are lined up that we do affect funding from Greater Manhattan Community Foundation.
I don't think we can hear you.
Good. Okay, I'll start over. Our Arts and Humanity Advisory Board, and we have recreation staff that are liaisons with that advisory board, they've been working on a donated public art policy, and we have a draft of that right now, and we expect that to be finalized. That'll help us to be able to accept private money for projects such as this. We do have two projects that are lined up that we anticipate Greater Manhattan Community Foundation funding for those projects, one at the Discovery Center, and one that you're somewhat familiar with, is the temporary art display, public art display that currently is in place on Third Street, and we're hoping to expand that. Those are two projects that very specifically have that funding source that you speak of, as well as we've interacted with Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, more, more substantial project, potentially to happen in the Douglas Park area, funded with Greater Manhattan Community Foundation. We've met with them previously. Assistant City Manager Dennis Marstall's been working with that as well, and again, we're in a draft process with that public art policy. We anticipate it to be completed by this, this summer, and that'll help open the door to those, those funds for public art projects.
Fantastic. I, I, it just seems to me that that was, seems to be a crazy roadblock that, that needed to be solved, but you're solving it. Thank you. I anxiously look forward to voting on it and passing it when it gets to us.
Yeah, thank you.
Eddie, have another question. Is there any possibility that, you know, we could delay funding this through tax dollars and wait until June and pay for this mural out of that?
I don't know about, I don't think I want to delay the project necessarily. We have it queued up pretty well right now. What we're hoping to do is to have it completed so that it can be unveiled by Juneteenth celebration. If we would delay it, we'd miss that, obviously. The project always had $10,000 earmarked for a public art aspect, and so, I mean, that, that funding source has been there for quite a while. Now, we certainly would, you know, welcome reimbursement towards it in some fashion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to delay it. I saw the Juneteenth thing, and that would be not a good plan to delay it, but I guess what I'm driving at, is there a way we can, you know, make this happen, but when that other money comes in, maybe reimburse it, so we save the...
I don't think I could give you an answer for that.
I know you can't, but how about investigating that? If we could pull that off, I think that's sort of what Mark's driving at.
Well, we're certainly anxious for public art, you know, the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, I was the first original liaison with that to address the art sculpture on the roundabout at Fourth and Blumont, and very successful project there that wasn't tax dollars, that put that piece in. The, again, the Third Street, right now, the temporary art project is a very successful project. That's kind of our second public art project that was not tax dollars, that that was Greater Manhattan Community Foundation dollars, and we're going to continue to explore that. As I said, we've got several projects that are queued up, and I think as we get these projects going, we're going to have more opportunities for them in the future. So Arts and Humanities Advisory Board is very serious about getting public art policy in place, and that should open the door for more opportunities.
Good, excellent.
I know the Arts and Humanities Committee is, has been anxious to get something going, and it, I don't know where the holdup is, but I'd like to, you to move it on through and get her done, because it is, it is so unusual to have money available, some, you know, ready to give to us, and we can't take it because we don't have a policy in place. So I'm a fan of, go look at Dodge Cities and edit it, go get Salinas and edit it. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here to get this moving, or we can have different segments of the same policy. And one would be something like this, another would be, if the city wanted to put something at Douglas Center, that might be different than if somebody wanted to put it on a private, I don't know, I don't know all the variables, but I just, I'm anxious to move it along.
Eddie, thank you. I think that, I was going to speak to this issue, but for a different reason. I really liked this art piece that was selected, and I'm glad there was excitement and enthusiasm to get a really quality piece there, and also, you know, I had a similar reaction when we did the flags for Manhattan. There's people interested, we have a creative side that we're trying to incorporate into the City of Manhattan, and this speaks so well to the Douglas Center and to what it's all about. I mean, just seeing that gave me goosebumps, so I can't wait to see this up and going, and for everyone to be excited about it by Juneteenth. I think that's a very good time to have it, and very important for the community to have that done. So I'm completely in favor of that, although I do appreciate all the other comments about using the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation and the funds that, that have been endowed for art purposes, and that is a, a different conversation, but as far as tonight, I just wanted to say I'm very excited about this art piece, and thanks to everybody that was a part of it to make it happen.
Okay, any other items on the consent agenda?
Oh, I, yes, me, excuse me. I mentioned it to Lynn earlier. Let's see, let me get my guide out here. Item F, which is the housing, housing study. I wanted to ask, one thing we have not had are definitions of workforce housing, suitable housing, and affordable housing, and I'd like for that to, if, if you can't do that for your scope of work, I'd like to make sure that when this consultant is finished, that we have real definitions here, because it looks like the terms are used interchangeably. One time, I mean, it's no, doesn't seem to be consistent to me in our, in our RFP. And I wondered too, I have a question about, there's a reference to subgeographies. What does that mean for the purposes of this study?
Chad, you want to take those on, please?
Is that utilities underground? Is that floodplain? What is subgeographies?
Do you have that page number by chance?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm working off the top of my head, but if I, if I'm correct...
It's on page three.
Three, very good, thank you.
Paragraph one, two, three, four.
All right.
Consultants will be asked to analyze...
Yep, okay. So the subgeographies is really reference to that map that is included into the RFQ, meaning we have neighborhood areas that, that separate the city so we could be a little bit more precise in where we think different types of housing may work or should go based on attributes within that neighborhood, so that's the, the meaning behind the subgeographies of the city, smaller areas.
Subgeography means neighborhoods?
Essentially, yes.
Size.
Smaller areas, and it doesn't, the, that may not just fall to the map, they may, the consultant may look at even smaller areas than, than what's anticipated on...
I mean, I could see Redbud being a subgeography.
Very good, yep.
Okay, well, I was heading off in the wrong direction, so I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
And on the question about the, the definition, that's a, a good point, and we would, we envision that the consultant and the community would help define those for our community, because when you say affordable housing, that can mean a lot of different things, and there's a lot of different ways to calculate that, and so we will use the expertise of the consultant and the input of our community to define those three things.
It seems like an evolving definition.
It really is.
It was affordable, and then, then when we, I think when we started this, or maybe a short time before, suddenly it was, the move, that, let's see, it was workforce housing and then suitable, and, but what are those things? And as long as we don't define it, it's, it's, we'll drive a truck through it, so...
We'll ultimately define it. I mean, affordable housing can be a charged topic, and that's why we started calling it suitable, in that it may not be, you don't, as, a family doesn't need, you know, something in a low to moderate income, but they do want it that's suitable for their family in terms of quality and number of bedrooms and location in the community, and so that's why we started using suitable, and then the sales tax issue brought the topic of workforce housing. So we'll hammer all that and have good definitions throughout the study.
On the, at the outcome side, when the study comes along, we just need to have them defined.
Yes, and we'll do that.
Okay, and the other, let's see, item G is overhead electrical, relocation of overhead electrical, that's on North Manhattan Avenue from Old Claflin to Kimball, and my question is, how many more of these electrical burial projects do we have with, associated with the North Campus Corridor that wasn't in the original proposal when they cost this much? And...
Jason Hildreer, Deputy City Manager, I believe this is the last one. I don't think we have any further.
Okay.
This, this, we have the next section under contract today on Kimball.
Right.
Basically, it'll finish to the intersection. There might be a little bit of overhead bury on the Kimball and Dennison intersection when we finally get there, because we're going to come short of that, that it would, it does not continue east under Project 10. But North Manhattan Avenue, Kimball Avenue, and obviously, we added College are the three that get the overhead.
Stay there for a second, and they were, that's, it was always planned, and it was always in the budget. It's, it's not unexpected, it's just terrifically expensive for what we're getting, it seems.
Kimball and North Manhattan were part of the plan from day one. We added College, and which was obviously the first one we did.
That was a surprise.
Next to soccer and next to baseball. We had anticipated turning the corner a little bit there, but obviously, when athletics put a lot of the money into soccer and baseball and contributed to the North Campus Corridor overall funding, that was a request they had.
One of the differences is that we've tried to get the underground done prior to the construction on the other phases. This one we waited for because we knew West Star was going to be doing some conversion themselves. So if you think about, we paid a similar cost for basically a stretch from Dickens to, to Kimball on College. This distance is about twice that for the same amount of money, so waiting for them to proceed with their project on their timeline has saved us considerable funds.
Okay, and the third question is on consent, item I, which is the North Manhattan Avenue from Blumont to Fremont, and so my question is, that there's no mention of electrical lines there, and it just talks about regular standard utilities, which I understand, but That's, there's no electrical, is the point, right?
Not in this scope or project. So Aggieville has a overhead bury plan, but it's really going to be dependent on a lot of the work in the alleys. That's where we see a lot of overhead in Aggieville.
Yeah, overhead lines.
Correct. We have worked with Olson on every segment that we've done so far, which is just 12th Street. North Manhattan will also have conduit put into it in the event we do need to pull underground electrical. There are certain components of the electrical system in Aggieville that have to remain overhead. They're so large, it's not something we can easily bring below grade, but every segment of roadway we're getting into, we're making sure there's adequate conduit, so in the event you do decide to bury overhead, that work is complete.
It seems like there's a gap then from Fremont to Old Claflin that will not have underground, because we're going, we're coming from the north to Old Claflin, and then we're going...
I don't believe North Man...
North from Blumont to Fremont.
Yeah, North Manhattan now is underground.
Correct.
From Old Claflin south to Aggieville, there are no overhead power lines.
Okay, so it's already done.
Yes. The overhead bury in Aggieville's a future discussion. We have not committed to it. We've studied it, again, with the alleys, that might be the opportunity, if we're going to rip those up and, and repair. There's a lot of other utility work in those alleys that would need to be done, but when we get there, we can debate whether or not that's a feature we'd like to see.
I'm glad there are no more comments. Thank you.
Okay, and we, we received one public comment electronically on, on item J on the consent agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in person on any item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll, we'll close public comments. Are there any other Commissioner comments?
No comments. I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so City Clerk Brenda Wolf, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, the next item, we'll move to the, uh, general agenda. And item A is the Crossroads Manhattan First Round of Public Engagement, it's a summary discussion. And Jared, I think you have the honor of presenting this one.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, I won't be presenting a lot, I'm really just gonna be introducing our consultants. Uh, we have Jamie Green, Sarah Bonjorno, Cyril Viola with Planning Next who have helped us with our strategic planning effort. Crossroads MHK, there's been a lot, uh, that we've been working on over the first, uh, four months. And we've done a lot of work and got a lot of input from the public as well as our city staff and stakeholders thus far. And now we're really starting to finally see some of, uh, those initial themes that we're, that we're getting from city staff and the public that are gonna, uh, help us guide, uh, an adoption of this plan. So we're really at the turning point, there's still a lot of work left to do. We're gonna continue to meet with our community committee, staff technical committee, stakeholders. We have a second round of engagement coming up in May that Planning Next will discuss tonight. So still a lot more inputs, what you're gonna see tonight is really that first, uh, crack at Planning Next, taking all of the stuff that they've compiled and putting it into themes and, and statements. And, and then during the May sixth, uh, and, uh, that May round of engagement, we're gonna start getting reactions from the public on, okay, did, we heard everything that you said, did we get it right? Does this resonate with you, are we on the right track? And then we're gonna continue to ask those questions, uh, throughout the summer. So I'll let, uh, Jamie and Sarah take it away, and I believe they're gonna share their screen.
Thanks, Jared, and thank you, uh, Commissioners this evening for, uh, having us here for a little bit of your meeting. Uh, Jared gave a pretty good summary of where we are, and, uh, I, I think the, the real honest part is we're, we're, we're at a real messy part right now with trying to draw, you know, threads through a lot of different work. Jared emphasized the, the public engagement, which is, you know, very important to us, and I know very important to you. But, but we've also, you know, engaged with, uh, the city staff, had interviews with every department. You may know that, but we're, you know, trying to build, uh, both sets of inputs up, you know, at the same time because it's probably really clear to you that, you know, whatever the community feels strongly about, that you then feel strongly about, you know, the, the primary implementers, you know, are your staff. So we need to understand, you know, kind of where they are right now and things that they need without any changes, but certainly what, what it is they might need, um, going forward. And it's from, from their sense and, you know, from ours is that, you know, they, for them to carry forward with the quality of services that, that is important to you and important to, uh, your constituencies is we gotta have a good financially healthy, uh, place. And, uh, we've had some really thoughtful comments with both the public and the staff, and the staff committee and the community committee. So Sarah and I are gonna, we're gonna hand this off here in a minute, but I'm gonna start, uh, in giving you a little bit. I think we just think it's important for, for, to level set here tonight that, um, where we are and what we're doing, and that is reviewing and analyzing the input from the first round, and in a minute it'll become clear just how extensive that is. Um, we've not made any record, there's no actions that we, uh, we think the community or any of the committees say we should do. But we are starting to sort of begin the process of giving shape to where recommendations might go. And, uh, so you'll see some of that tonight is that we're, 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 we're trying to make some sense of it. And like most of these situations, you know, you work to agreement from the general to the, to the more specific. So, you know, we're really at the general part now trying to, to make some sense of what this looks like. With the idea being that we're gonna go test the public, we're, we're not gonna assume in May that we got everything right. Uh, it's an iterative process and we're gonna go back out to them. And that is, uh, in the third item about where we are right now, and that is, you know, working with Jared, Vivian and the other committees on getting ready for this next round, and that's the very end of our, our session here tonight. So you'll know we're close to the end when we get there. So it's important for us to, and we hope it's important for you as well, is gonna like, to know where we're headed with the work. You know, we've got a lot of input, um, but how does it all get, you know, packaged? And so for us to have places to slot the work, you know, we've got this basic fram- framework of how the recommendations are going to go together. And, you know, this would be a really good place if, if somebody says, "We don't understand this," or "We don't like it" because we're gonna keep moving in this direction. But basically, you know, there's a, you know, a setup at the beginning, you know, that tries to identify like, why, why did the city of Manhattan actually do this process, and why are they doing it now? What do you, what, what was the hope to get out of it? Uh, who all was involved in everything that we've done here? You know, it wasn't the consultants doing this to the community, it wasn't the citizens doing whatever they want, and it wasn't, you know, the elected officials just telling everyone how it's going to be. Uh, but who was that, why was that, and, uh, you know, how it took place? We also then think there needs to be this, you know, this executive summary, that if no one reads anything else about the strategic plan, they'll have a sense of what the, the renewed vision is. They'll, and for the community, they'll understand what the mission is, understand what your values are in, you know, 2021, what your higher level aspirations are in these goals, and then, you know, what are your priorities? And, you know, whether that becomes top ten, your top ten or something less, that's important. I would point out to you in this executive summary that, you know, we have this mission here, and all of these words sometimes get used in the same way, mission, vision. Uh, sometimes visions are written long, sometimes missions are written long, sometimes are written short. That notation thereafter, mission, is that, you know, we got, we got some suggestions from the committee is that the mission, there ought to be like a motto, something you could put on your bumper sticker, you know, but they know it has to be richer than that. And so that's a, that's just a note to us that we're doing that. The other part about this is you'll see in parentheses where it says, "Community," or "Government," or "Community and Government." When this actually gets laid out, I could almost see the mission being pulled out to the side because, uh, it's kind of outside the flow of the vision, values, goals and priorities. The mission is really what's gonna drive the accomplishment, you know, of all the other items. But we have it in the, the, the piece here. And then for the goals where it says, "Community and Government," we expect this plan and therefore these goals to have, um, a set of goals, and we just, we define the goals as desired outcomes expressed in simple terms. There'll be goals that are about the community, and then there will be goals that are really inside the walls of government, like the, the, how it's actually organized and working. So you'll see when we get into this that there'll be some, it's all interrelated, it's, it's really all the same work. But we have to pull out things that are really about operations and those are about sort of the quality of life of the community. And then the real heart of the plan here is the action agenda. And we're gonna have a series of goals which, again, are desired outcomes expressed in simple terms. They're not big elaborate statements and they don't say how to do it. They just say what you want as an outcome. And they'll be, they'll be different, and they'll be the organizing components of the action agenda. And for each action agenda, there'll be a description about what is this goal area and why it's important. And then a series of projects, policies or programs to support that goal. And we'll do that, we don't know how many goals right now, but it'll be a repetitive sort of process. And it'll become the playbook, uh, for the community inside and outside City Hall on how to, you know, manage a more prosperous future, uh, for Manhattan. So that's our framework. Okay, Sarah, you go to the next one? And this is about publicity and communications, I'm gonna take a couple more of these and then Sarah will, uh, will do the good work here. But in terms of, of, uh, the publicity and communications work, um, here's, here's everything kind of by the numbers. The primary goal that we have in doing this kind of work for you, this qualitative research, is to, you know, make participation a choice, uh, to give everybody, every possible reason to participate. But they're gonna choose, many are gonna choose not to. So when you look at these, you know, I'd want you to be looking at the order of magnitude of, and Vivian and Jared have been terrific here in the committee, uh, but this is the kind of exposure that the process has had. So it'd be hard for, you know, for many folks not to know about the Crossroads Plan. But a lot of good exposure here to the process. Uh, on the website, you know, also some significant input, you know, the visits are there in front of you, survey submissions, you know, over six hundred, uh, we believe sixteen hundred visits, you know, visitors learned something about the process. And then we actually got eight hundred who chose to, you know, register for this, for this work. Next. So we, we make a distinction between the, the publicity that we were just talking about, which, you know, kind of creates awareness, you know, it's kind of the media piece, it creates awareness. But what we also track is like word of mouth marketing, like how do people actually communicate? And so this is a, you know, a very, very impressive list, and it's not all of it as you see the "and" more. The community committee, uh, did a terrific job, you have a terrific civic infrastructure here in the community. And, um, you know, they went after them, you know, in terms of letting them know that they had and still have opportunities to participate in this process. It'd be hard for me to imagine that the city's ever kind of pulled all these things together in sort of one messaging and cause as, as you have done here in the last few months. Okay, Sarah? Uh, so these are by the numbers for the actual engagement. So we're counting right now, so far, is a thousand unique, uh, participants. You know, some of them participated through one of four virtual public meetings, online surveys, uh, the college student focus groups. We have this, this method about going to where people are with a meeting in the box, there were ten of those. Uh, some targeted surveys, um, that really from the thousand folks brought over five thousand total pieces of unique input into the conversation. So when I said at the beginning, this is the messy part of trying to get it, this is just the public, this is not any of the staff input or any other research. Uh, there's also, you know, some other participation that's going on, five external stakeholders, and as I just mentioned, the staff interviews, it, it's a lot, um, but for very good reason and for very good use. Okay. Oh, so you all, I know, are aware that we have these committees, and Sarah and Cyril have been, you know, working with them very closely. Uh, they've each had three meetings so far, the community committee, you know, working on, um, you know, the process and the outreach, uh, what we've done and what we're going to do. There, there's some thoughts on the plan elements and the input, and, you know, their reactions to the, to the round one of input. Similar kind of approach for the, the technical committee, but we actually had them do a particular exercise, a three-box solution, which I think Sarah's gonna address here in a minute. But that helped them, helped, helped them help us with some things that, that they do, don't do, shouldn't do, could do, you know, in the work. I, I would like to commend both groups, uh, maybe especially the committee because they're a larger group. But they've been doing all this work, uh, getting to know us, in many cases getting to know each other, and doing this all on Zoom. That is not an ideal for this kind of process, but, you know, they've been, they've been more than up to the task. Okay? Sarah, do you wanna take it from here in terms of who we heard from?
Yeah, I can take over here. So, um, we're gonna provide a little overview here of some of our participation statistics. Um, so you can see here, um, you know, the demographics, this is a breakdown of, of age. This column here is, you know, who participated across all the different, um, ways they could have participated, through an online survey or through a virtual meeting or meeting in a box. Here's how it compares to the demographics in the, from the census, um, in the community. So, you know, we did get, you know, age groups represented, um, from all the different age groups, but we are light on the, you know, college, um, you know, uh, population there, um, which is, you know, is a hard one to get. Um, and we're gonna, um, we've got some, we'll share at the end about how we're gonna maybe, um, try to get a little bit more of that in May. Um, we also were a little light on some of the diversity, you know, the Asian, African-American, Hispanic, two or more races, uh, a little lower than what you're representing in the community. So I know that the community committee, you know, um, worked hard, they identified some of these, um, outlets and, and channels and ways we can maybe reach some of these, uh, folks, and so we got some, but we didn't get, you know, as many as we were wanting to. So again, we're working with the community committee for this next round to sort of tailor, um, and try to be a little more focused and intentional to, to make sure we're reaching some of these, um, these folks. Um, the geographic reach, you know, we mapped, we asked people that are participating, like where they live. So we did get good representation from across the community, some areas, you know, a little lighter than, than others. Um, but this is kind of how the, the percentage of participants sort of maps out across, um, the city. And of course, there was, uh, you know, nineteen percent that live, you know, outside, technically outside the city limits, but were interested in this process, um, you know, because they've, you know, maybe work in the city or, uh, come into the city for services and, and such. So we wanted to, um, pull out, you know, some of the, um, some of these sort of subsets of the population. Um, you know, we did do a, a, a sort of targeted effort towards college students. We had, um, as Jamie mentioned, a couple, a couple, three different focus groups. Um, we also had a survey, you know, the high school students, um, as well. We had some attending through the different means, but we also had a survey. And then we wanted to, you know, highlight the fort and the impact of those, uh, folks. We did have people joining us, um, through the virtual meetings and through the online participation that are affiliated, um, with the fort. So this is sort of the, kind of, um, breakdown of folks that we had out of the thousand that sort of fill into the subset population. I also wanted to mention that we had a really great external stakeholder, um, interview with a couple of the social service agencies, the, the emergency shelter and the punit mental health. And we provided them as a follow-up to that, they were super helpful and wanted to be helpful to, to get their, um, you know, the, the folks that they connect with day in, day out, um, engage and their voices heard in this process. So we packaged up sort of a, a simplified meeting in a box and sent it to them. They, um, just based on, um, you know, kind of timing of things and when they can pull people together, uh, they're still working on this, but we are expecting some input, um, you know, through some of the, um, group meetings and common meals and things like that, that they have an opportunity to touch, uh, touch some folks. So we're waiting on feedback from, from those groups, but we really, um, we heard that loud and clear from the community committee that, you know, there's, there's folks in the, the city and, and the community that, um, we're just gonna have to work a little harder at to get their voice, and so we're, we're trying to, to reach those, so more to come on that.
Sarah, this is Linda Morse. I, I, you seem short on college students, are you gonna shore, shore that up too? I mean, they're a major influence here, and, uh, this is, uh, a major issue here in the community.
Yeah, no, we, we had some discussions about that, and we have a couple of students on our committee, community committee, who have, you know, really tried to get, you know, the student, um, they bring that student perspective, but, you know, bring more voices and so we can get that a little bit more balanced. Um, we are taking, and I'll explain more of this, um, at the end of the presentation, but we are taking more of a go-to-them approach, you know, this first round, given the pandemic and what we were dealing with, it was, you know, that people had to kind of, you know, log on to the Zoom and kind of come to us. We are gonna be on campus, uh, are planning to be in-person on campus on May sixth, uh, and doing an intercept style where we can be with students, you know, hopefully catch their attention with some snacks and some other things, and then get them to engage with us. So we're trying a little bit different tactic, um, and we're hoping that we can, um, to, to do that, uh, and build that up a little bit. And then, you know, we know that we're gonna, you know, we know that the commu-, the college is going to, you know, wrap up here in May and have graduation, but, you know, there's still gonna be students on campus in the summer, I'm assuming with summer classes and stuff, so I, we have to talk with Jared, but I think depending on how May sixth goes and some of our, our follow-up targeted approaches there, um, you know, there'd be opportunity to maybe supplement a little bit in the summer as well and do some more, uh, maybe some more focus groups. We did get about twenty-five students, um, you know, to, to engage with us in those focus groups. And I think if we continue to, um, you know, uh, work with those same students that came, came with us, they had some ideas about how to get more people involved, I think we can continue to build that up. But yeah, we have a little bit different approach we're gonna take in May to try to balance that out. Okay, any other questions? I can pause here for a second. I can pause here for a second. Okay. Um, so now I'm gonna go through, you know, what we heard. Um, and again, this is a summary of the, you know, public input process, uh, public input, uh, which had, you know, the online survey, the virtual meetings, the meeting in the boxes. Um, and I just, you know, I think, just to kind of level set here that, you know, we were clear that this is qualitative research, we know this is a self-selected group. This is in no means, you know, a statistically valid sampling. But as you can see that we, you know, we did reach a lot of people, we did reach, um, different folks. So it is qualitative research, um, the input was reviewed and analyzed blindly. So it's all put into a database and, you know, we have it coded by source, but we don't, we don't look at that. It's not like certain, um, folks' input is weighted more than others, it's not weighted. Um, and we're really, we're looking for ideas that started to coalesce together. Um, you know, people using similar words, similar phrases to kind of talk about an idea. I also wanted to say that, you know, we ask people to respond to, um, you know, a specific question about, you know, what is their vision for the future? Or what do they think the mission should include? And we ask specific questions to kind of get at input for these elements to help us, um, you know, start to draft these elements. But people will share what's on their minds. And so one of the things that I think we've been working with Jared and the committee on is that, you know, and we've got, I can give you some input, the, the committee's also given us some input to, to the reactions to some of these themes. But, you know, um, it's all good input and so not, not, some of it can slide around a little bit, you know. Someone may give us a really good idea and they may have happened to talk about in the mission, but it's actually more of a vision thing. So there's some flexibility, um, as you see, you'll see some repeated themes here. Um, but I think, um, what we are seeing so far from committee is there are some clear things that the community is, you know, looking for. So, um, with that, I'm going to start in on this. So we're gonna start at the top with the vision. Um, we asked the question, um, of folks, and looking out ten to fifteen years, what would be included in your vision for the future of the city of Manhattan? And again, just as a reminder, the vision is, is the top of the pyramid, uh, as a framework, as Jamie set up, it's the highest level, therefore most general expression of a community's future, reflects the values and sets the tone for more specific recommendations. So what we heard, um, is a set of bullets here, I'll, I'll go, kind of go through them. People were interested in a place that is vibrant, welcoming, diverse and safe. They wanted options and things, different things to do. They wanted to be affordable and prosperous, uh, from the sort of personal prosperity side. They also wanted it from a community side, diverse economy and more jobs. Uh, they wanted a green community. There was many comments about sustainability, healthy, you know, walkable. Um, they were interested in a well, you know, well-maintained infrastructure, good services across the entire city, that, you know, neighborhoods and everything were treated, um, in an equal manner, equitable manner. Um, and then they were interested in, there was a lot of comments about growth and continued growth. Um, and I put in parentheses in a lot of different ways, um, because people, sometimes they just use the word growth and that's it. Some people qualified it, um, growth of opportunities, growth of jobs, growth of the economy. But they also were very adamant about the small-town feel. A lot of folks still saw in the, in the future that, you know, Manhattan has, maintains its small-town character, small-town feel. Um, and we, we got into a nice discussion with the Community Committee about, you know, if, taken at the surface, you might see these as competing interests. But I, I think through the input and clarification from the committee that really people are interested in the growth of the economy and opportunities. Um, and you can do that and still maintain your, your small-town feel with being welcoming and, um, sort of the scale of the community. We also asked about the mission. Um, we asked, you know, we're creating a mission for the city, um, of Manhattan as an organization. You know, what, what should the mission statement include? And as a reminder, you know, we, we reminded people that it's, it's used by an organization to explain in simple and concise terms its purpose for being. And so some mission themes, uh, that appear were, you know, they were interested in a city that, you know, was, um, open, welcomed, inclusive of all people. Uh, they're interested in the city being forward-thinking and innovative in services, solutions, programming and opportunities. They were very interested in transparency, accountability and being fiscally responsible. And, you know, they were interested in contributing to a high, sort of a high quality of life, things around amenities and opportunities for the residents. And there was also a sustainability theme here about protecting natural resources and the environment. We asked about values. Uh, we asked it in the framing of, um, of Word Cloud activity about, in one word, what do you love most about living in Manhattan? And of course, values reflected a high level what the community cares about most. And so these were some of the value themes. Um, so people valued, you know, the people, the sense of community, um, that it's friendly and welcoming. That was, uh, heard a lot. Um, K-State was mentioned quite a lot and this idea of being a college town. Um, this, again, the size, the small-town feel, um, some of these are kind of exact words that I pulled out. You know, people said it's the right size, the pace, the ease, the calm, the sense of safety. They valued that. Um, this active lifestyle bucket here kind of rolled up a number of things that people said about. They valued the parks, the trails, um, just the outdoor amenities, trees, the walkable and bikeable nature. And then there was a sixth bucket that was, um, sort of more general, but it was kind of getting at the culture, the energy, the vibrancy, the opportunities and variety, um, that they, that they value, um, in the community. And then getting at the goals, um, we asked about outcomes. You know, we asked, what do you hope, you know, comes out of this planning process? And we reminded folks that, you know, goals and desired outcome expressed in simple terms, as Jamie had shared earlier. And so these, um, you know, we, we asked this question of the, the public, uh, you know, as a public engagement. We also worked with the staff on this idea, and Jamie mentioned this, this three-box solution. Um, and we did staff interviews where we heard from them, you know, what's working well within their department, what are some challenges? But we asked them to think about their department and their work. Um, and this is a book, you can look it up if you're not familiar with it, Three-Box Solution. But it's a way of thinking, um, about, you know, all the things that you're responsible for into three buckets. Um, we asked them to think about the core, you know, managing the central things, the central things that you have to do to keep, you know, the business running, the organization running. Um, we asked them to think about the surrender or things that they might shed, you know. What are some other ideas, practices, attitudes that are inhibiting? Uh, maybe there's some, something that's always been done a certain way, but maybe it's not the most efficient and maybe it's time to rethink it. And then we asked them about the potential, right? Um, sometimes do you, you, there's no room to add anything new, uh, create new approaches unless you shred, uh, shed or surrender some things. So we asked them to think about, you know, what are some new things or new approaches? So we took this information, um, and then kind of looked at what the public was giving us in that goal question. And what we're trying to do now, and this is where, um, you know, Jamie was saying it's in the messy part, where we're trying to kind of look at this stuff and make some sense of it together. And there are, there are quite a bit of, um, places where it kind of comes together. But this is where we see, um, the sort of focus, you know, for the goal areas. Now again, these are not written yet as goal statements. They are literally just, um, uh, trying to describe in general the, the goal direction. Um, and this first one here is really, you know, responding to, um, a lot of things rolls up from the three-box solution that the, the city staff provided us, which is a well-run city organization where employees are a public resource and staff to realize the vision for the city. And then, you know, we could see as an organization, you know, actions kind of supporting, you know, maybe organized by department, um, for each department, how they, um, you know, actions coming from the three-box solution input are more administratively focused, but how, you know, how those specific actions help them, you know, really realize the vision and realize all the rest of these goals. These other goals, two through eight, are coming from the public, um, input that we heard. Um, and we could see these being cross-referenced to specific departments that are helping to implement. But these ones are coming, um, from the themes that we heard from the public. So again, this idea of diverse employment opportunities, this idea of talent recruitment and retention and really being attractive and retaining, um, talent. Um, this idea about a quality community that is attracted, attractive to all. There was a lot of, um, comments about just, you know, the, the quality, the high quality of the community and being open and welcoming. This sustainability and environmentally focused theme is still, you know, here in this goal area. Um, this idea of improved infrastructure facilities and development, and that kind of can house, you know, a lot of different things, uh, on the, from the infrastructure standpoint, facility standpoint. And then complementing that, I think this idea of high quality and a variety of amenities, services, events and programs that people are interested in. Um, and then there was definitely a theme about equitable opportunities and access. Again, I think that was a theme we saw throughout about just being intentional and equitable, um, across the community. And then there was definitely a, a, a outcome, a goal area around transparent government with a well-managed budget and strong fiscal health. So I'm gonna pause there, um, and see if you all have any, um, questions. And I can go back to some of the previous slides if you wanna relook at any of the, the themes. But this, this was, you know, our first, it's, it's like I said, it's our first pass at kind of making some sense of it, looking and seeing what people are, um, interested in. And then we did present this information, um, we, we provided the full database of comments to the Community Committee. Um, and we also, uh, shared this deck with the Staff Technical Committee, um, to see like what they think. Are we, do we, you know, are we interpreting the community correctly? Is, is this stuff resonate with them? Can they help us, um, you know, interpret something or give a little bit more flavor? So we did get, you know, I think, good feedback from both committees that in general, the themes and, and areas resonated with them. We did have a good discussion about the growth versus small-town feel. Um, you know, we got some input on, you know, um, you know, some more things to think about relative to maybe how we craft the mission statement, something about, we got some input on the format of that. It might be, you know, um, a good approach for, for Manhattan from both groups. So we've got, you know, a good start to try to, you know, work with this input to really start crafting the draft, the actual content, now the draft statement, uh, for the vision and the mission and the values and the goals. Jared, I don't want anyone jumping on anything as well here, but that's where we are.
This is Linda Mars. I wondered, are these goal areas prioritized?
Not yet, not yet. We are going to work on that with, in this next round and work with the community, both, both committees on that. But right now, this is just what, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's what rose out of all the input. The most people were interested in these kind of eight things, but among the eight, they're not prioritized yet.
This is Commissioner Ready. Um, I think this is just like a big picture items that you have up there. So like improved infrastructure facilities and development, what does that mean? Uh, what do each of those items mean? Uh, and when we also look at budgeting and priorities, where does, where does the community, as well as our internal staff, what do they see as, when we start budgeting? Where do they see that pockets of money going? That's something I would be very interested in knowing, because these are all, uh, items that, you know, would fall into almost any size city, uh, like ours. And I think these are things that they appreciate about Manhattan and that's probably why they came here, live here, work here, uh, or even took the survey. And also, what is it that they didn't like? What is it that we do that they really feel, communities especially, community members especially, feel like, you know, um, they don't see progress in? Or they don't see money being invested in something they, they think is a priority? So I would like to know more of the, their, um, critical criticism of the city and where we need to improve and where those budget priorities fall for them as well.
Yeah, that's an interesting lens. Um, and I, I, I think we, there, if, um, we go back through the raw database, we can probably pull some, um, we can pull some things together, I think, that address. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I think we can probably pull some things together. But I think this, um, yeah, the prioritization is really, uh, coming as we start to, you know, work up this. And we've got, what we're starting to do, which we haven't, we're, we're like literally in the middle of it right now, is taking, there was another question that we asked about, you know, what do you want the city to focus on in the next five years? Like specific, trying to get them to some specific actions. Um, and so in the process of sort of looking at that input, combining it with like the outcomes and kind of merging it in together to see, like you just said, what are the specific, you know, projects, policies, programs that are underneath that improved infrastructure piece? So we're literally in the middle of that, um, working through that process right now. So we'll have a little bit more, um, to share here soon on that.
One question we did also ask was, um, during the first round of public engagement, was reactions about interactions with the city. We asked, uh, individuals, positive interactions that they had with the city, as well as any things that, n, n, negative reactions or things that they thought were frustrating that we can incorporate into a lot of these action areas as well. One thing I'll also point out, uh, that we heard from our Community Committee related to, uh, it's specifically related to the values section when we were talking about that, but it can apply across the others, was we heard a lot of desires from the community. Even the value section was focused on things that people love about Manhattan. But to your point, Commissioner, there are things that people value in a community that we may not do. And that's what we're trying to also see during the second round of engagement. And when we ask, does this resonate with you? Cause there are some things on that, uh, these goal areas or vision, values in particular, was what our committee was talking about, that, yeah, other people may feel that way, but I don't feel that way. And, and there may be other people who we didn't reach that may not have felt that way. So we're trying to, to reach that, that during the second round as well. So it's a great point.
Yeah, and to, to further that, Jared, that question about like sort of, what are your best experiences with city government and what, you know, what experiences, um, you know, could be better? Um, we've, we've got that information and we were, we're at the point now where we're, and we've got some other questions that we asked specifically of the college students and the high school students about, you know, uh, what would keep them in Manhattan? Um, what do they, you know, what, what do they feel welcomed here when they first arrive, like as a college student? So, um, those are questions where we're at the point where we're gonna, it's almost like a lens by which we now look through the information and look through that database and start to sort of, um, I don't know what the cross-reference is, not quite the right word, but help reinforce or fine-tune what we're hearing here. So, um, we, and we can pull some of that information out, especially if you're interested in it and, and, um, you know, make sure you kind of pull that separately. But we're, it's a, it's a sort of, not a checks and balances exactly, but it's another way, another lens by which we're looking through and say, do we have some? Like if the things that, that, that the community appreciates, like the best experiences, are we still preserving those? And the places where that we think we can do better, are we addressing that? So it's like a, it's a way to kind of, um, look through and make sure that we're, as we're working this up, that we're being mindful of that. And we're being mindful of what the college students told us about, you know, um, feeling welcome when they came and what barriers do they see to keeping them in Manhattan when they graduate or what would keep them here? So there's more questions and more input, um, that we're gonna kind of layer in, I guess, is one way to put it.
Also, I would just like to add to one of your in-person drop-in events. Maybe add the Douglas Center in there as well. It seems like we didn't have enough collection, uh, from race, uh, and ethnicity groups. And, uh, that would be a, that would be something that in-person might work better for, uh, in some of those areas. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for that suggestion. Okay, well, we, um, I'm gonna move along here, um, and just hit on a couple of slides here about our round two engagement. We're still, you know, tweaking the details. But right now, what we're planning is on May sixth, um, an in-person sort of drop-in events, um, at three different locations. Um, one is, as I mentioned, we're gonna go to K-State and we're gonna be on the terrace from eleven to one. We're working with, um, folks there to get us a table. Um, we'll have our materials and, and it's gonna be, um, intercept style. We're gonna have the, the couple of folks from the Community Committee, their students, to kind of help us with that. Um, and so we're really gonna try to catch people's attention, get this to interact with us. We have a, um, we'll have an online survey. People can snap this QR code and take it right there on their phone. We're gonna, maybe have some tablets people can use if they don't have a smartphone. Um, so we're really trying to test again what we heard with the public, um, in this round, put it back up and, and shaped up in these elements. The downtown happy hour, um, that is gonna be, um, from four-thirty to six. And Jared has, um, worked with the local businesses in the downtown area with the dining platforms, um, so that we can have six different locations going at the same time. We're gonna help staff those with community, uh, committee members. And, um, we're hoping that people will come out, but also we might catch some folks that are just down in the downtown area on a Thursday night for happy hour. Anyway, get them to stop in, um, engage with us, um, uh, at that event. And then in the evening, we're gonna be at WeFalle Pavilion, um, and we're gonna be there from seven to nine. And again, hoping people will, it's, you know, in, in person, but drop in so we can spread people out and, um, get them to, we'll have some display boards and some information. And then they can, um, give us some feedback directly right on a tablet or through their phone. So those are, you know, one day of sort of moving about the community, um, trying to make a little, we, we're trying to make it a little celebratory, um, we're trying to line up some, you know, different fun things that we can, uh, uh, do or offer as part of these. of these events. The roadshow piece, though, I think is shaping up to be a really important component here where we can, again, the idea of a roadshow is kinda take it out to the community. And so, you know, whether it's posting information around town with the QR code for people to take the survey right then, or actually having a table out in front of a business, or as you suggested, the Douglas Center and being there, maybe at a busy time and there's a lot of activity and classes and things happening, we can catch people and get them to engage. We are getting feedback from the community committee on, you know, where to reach the demographics that we missed in the first round. And we really wanna be intentional with this, you know, we wanna use their, you know, we get their feedback. They've already provided us through a survey, follow-up to their meeting last Thursday, really great starting list, you know, a big list of folks that we can, of places that we can go and hopefully reach folks. So, it's a little bit more, again, taking it, you know, trying to go into the community. We'll also have the online activities at the website. So, as before, self-paced online so that people can do that on their own time. And then, we are planning a virtual meeting, and we had some success with that in this first round, especially that Monday sort of 12 to 1 time slot, actually was our best-attended meeting. I think we had like 60 folks. So, we're gonna offer that again for people who may not feel comfortable yet, you know, due to the pandemic or whatnot, to come out in person, that we will offer that virtual meeting opportunity. So, again, we're trying to offer, you know, a wide range of ways and different, more focused, intentional ways to get at some of the missed demographics from the first And then, you know, we are gonna test, validate the draft elements of the plan, you know, the vision, values, goals. We're, the missions highlighted, we're still discussing about how we might best test that. And then, you know, we're gonna, we wanna get ideas and feedback on the priority actions for each goal area. So, we're still, you know, working all this up, but we do wanna, I know it's important to get to the priorities, and so, we're gonna be able to get at that in this second round. So, we, again, we'll have some in-person, some online, some targeted, going-to-the-people opportunities in this next round. And that is all we have for tonight. If you have any other questions or comments, we'd be happy to hear them now.
Sarah, one thing I will mention too, related to kind of the feedback that we're going to be getting during that second round, Planning Next is working diligently to take all those inputs. They've created some themes and some ideas here. Now, they're drafting some draft statements, vision, mission, values, even some actions out of the plan. We're gonna try and get those to you so you can see what the public's going to see, and you can have a chance to see those. We are, of course, wanting the public to react to those, and then we, so then, then we can take all that input from the public again after the second round, tell the commission, the committees what we heard, and come back to you during our next touchpoints, kinda like we did here to say, okay, we drafted up these areas. Again, they're drafts. Everything is a work in progress right now, getting that feedback from the public, providing that, those feedback and reactions to you all so that you can, again, because you'll be the ones ultimately adopting this plan, providing your reactions and feedback to that. So, we'll try and get that to you. We have a quick turnaround from now until May 6. We, you know, we need to be printing a lot of these poster boards and flyers that we're gonna be using during the second round, but we wanted to let you know, we'll try and get that information to you so you can at least see it and have a glimpse at what the public's gonna see, starting May 6 and beyond.
This is Commissioner Ready. I do appreciate the work that's been done so far. I think once we start, like you said, prioritizing, getting back those suggestions and working in communities, in-person is going to be very helpful. There's a lot of communities that do not do well with just, here's a link, go ahead and take the survey or help us out, because everything is online and there's just this exhaustion of another survey or online and things like that. So, I think there'll be more coming when you do the in-person ones, and it just also creates a better relationship. And hopefully, when you have, you have a larger committee meeting, kinda like the diversity one, in-person one at some point, where they're also doing their own little breakout sessions and communicating with each other at some level, and ultimately prioritizing even not only their outlook, but also their budget, where they think it should be going. And I also want to know, where do, where does the community see, feel like we're not investing enough or we're investing too much and they just don't see the point? Because that, we have to explain those types of things. We have packets that we get on Thursday, we make decisions on Tuesday, but the rest of the community, it's meaningless to them, they're not gonna open any packets, they expect us to do our homework, but they may not understand everything that we are doing or they may, we may not understand what they want. That's the other piece to the budgeting process. So, I'm looking forward to more of those types of conversations and even some of the things that help, a lot of the things that might help us prioritize our budget situations as well. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Looks good to me. The only comment I have is, I hope we can.
I'll have your mic on.
You have the mic on. I'm starting to talk into it well. Is it good now?
I can, I can hear you.
Is it good now? Still not.
I think, I think you just lean into it a little bit.
All right, well, I leaned into it pretty far.
How about that?
Is it working now? Okay, now we've got some, some voice. I would just be interested in having the, you know, survey link easily found on the website, because, because I think we could get more people. I was a little bit disappointed with just 600 or so people having taken that, that survey, because I, I did my best to pass out the cards and get people there, and I think some missed the dates and then they weren't able to take it late. So, you know, just getting that publicized more where I can, you know, tell people here, go take this survey, because I'd like to see many more than 600 people participate if we wanna get really good data, so.
Are you taking more people to do the survey? Are you still, or is that part shut down? That's what I understood.
Yeah, we, we closed the first round survey so we could, you know, tally it up and look at it, and now we're, we're creating the questions for the second. So, there'll be like a re, a new survey. So, when we communicate with the 800 folks that are registered on the website to participate, we will communicate like, hey, there's another, you know, like a new survey opportunity, new, new, new input opportunity. And so, we'll, we'll do some of that. And we're, we're trying to make it very visible on the website. We have, we're trying to put it, you know, there's some limitations to kinda how the site lays out, but we're trying to make it as visible as we can, and then working with Vivian to push it out through social media and other ways as well. So, I appreciate you handing out the cards and hoping, getting people there. But, yeah, we'll be opening that up on May 3, so folks can, you know, drop it in-person on May 6 or get online and find the new, you know, the new input opportunity starting on May 3.
And then, when's the, when's the cutoff date on that? Because, because I realize the other one was closed. I'm focused on the second round to get more people involved in it. So, that'll be open May 3 until how long?
Yeah, so, we're gonna at least leave it open through May 16. So, we'll take it down that, kinda that Monday, May 17. But because we're doing this roadshow and we want to be really intentional and work with the committee, we've, we're talking to Jared today about just, you know, there may be an opportunity to leave that open a little bit longer, so it'll at least be open two weeks. But if we're getting good input every day, we're seeing like 20 or 30 people finding it, participating, we'll wanna capitalize on that momentum, you know? And we'll advertise when it's gonna close to make sure people know this time. I know there was a little bit of confusion because we had a mini survey up and then we had our first round survey up. We'll try to make sure we're being clear this time so people don't miss out.
So, is phase two limited to the people that participated in phase one, or is it all wide open?
Wide open, yeah. Anybody can jump on at any point and give feedback. We will, you know, we wanna make sure we communicate broadly to folks that, you know, I know we're calling this round two, but to the public, it's, a lot of our publicity material says, you know, meet us, meet us at the crossroads. So, there's sort of a publicity theme around it. We're not really calling it round two, internally we are, but out there in the public, it's just another opportunity. We will, you know, reach out to those 800 registrants and the folks that participated and signed up through the website to let them know. Like I said, we'll do some target outreach to them, but it's really wide open. Anyone can jump on at this point. There's enough information on the website that they can catch up and participate.
Thank you.
We also had over 100, and I think it was about 150 people participate across all the virtual meetings. So, we have their emails so that we can reach out to them to let them know about this round of engagement, because they likely didn't take the survey, because all the input they provided during the, the virtual meeting. So, we have that as well and some more contact information.
Excellent. I hope we can get as many people as, as possible involved, and I've been pushing that, and I think all the other commissioners have too, so we can, we can get a, you know, good database to make a decision. So, I appreciate where we're at so far.
Great. Well, thank you all for your help. We really appreciate. Jared will share some new kind of publicity materials with you so we could really use your help the next couple of weeks to, you know, let people know about the May 6, but also that there's a new survey on the website coming up too. So, we appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. I guess if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. There's, there's no motion on this since it was just a discussion item for tonight. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an overview and review of Articles 1, 2, and 3 of the Manhattan Developmental Code.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name's Chad Bungger. I'm the Assistant Director for Community Development. Let me pull up my presentation here. This has been a long time coming. My staff with the Community Development Department's been working extremely hard to get us to this point. About a year ago, we were ready to do the same activity, and then COVID hit, shut us all down. Once the world stopped spinning in all directions with the pandemic, we started meeting almost weekly, almost twice weekly with our staff, specifically John Adam, our Senior Planner for Current Planning, and Ben Schmeele, our Planner 3, and Rachel Zinger with the City Attorney's Office. To go through this with a fine-tooth comb, we had intended to do that last year, kind of coinciding with the process that we're gonna embark on now. Because of the pandemic pause, we did that work, and we're before you tonight to kinda start with the public education process with a, we hope is a pretty good, clean draft that we're pretty excited about. It's not set in stone, really, the zoning code is never set in stone, so if we have something that isn't correct for our community, we can always make adjustments. But we think we're to a point where we're excited about it to get to the community and hopefully everyone else is comfortable with it, and then we can roll into the adoption First off, I wanna say a couple things. We recognize this is gonna be a big change for a lot of people that work with the Development Code, the zoning and subdivision regulations now. It's a whole new look and feel, whole new names, and that sometimes can put people on edge or make it unsure. So, if people bear with us, we'll get through this, and I think we have a pretty good code. We set through this whole endeavor to streamline our processes, to modernize it, and to make it more predictable. And I think as we get through this, we've, we've tried to accomplish that without creating a whole lot of nonconformities. We could've went through and totally scrapped everything and set it perfect in the world, but that would've meant we would've made everyone's home nonconforming or businesses nonconforming, or signs, or those sort of things. So, we had to balance that pretty well. So, let me get into this. This project started out as a unified development code, and as staff got working through this, we really just started calling it the Development Code, and we quickly realized that hopefully, sooner rather than later, people will forget that it unified the zoning regulations with the subdivision regulations. And so, we just started calling it the Manhattan Development Code, and it has stuck. So, we're gonna try to rebrand it through this to where people will forget it was a unifying topic or code, and we're just now a development code. So, first, I wanna start with the, the engagement process that we're undertaking. Regrettably, it's not quite as great as what Jared and, and Planning Next is doing with the strategic plan, but we hope to get it close. The first thing we've done is utilized our new Bang the Table engagement platform, Engage MHK, similar to what the Crossroads Project is doing. So, we set up this project page, and this will be expanded upon as we evolve. But the one thing we're gonna do, kinda coinciding with our presentations to you all on the Planning Board and the Ordinance Advisory Committee, is we will have these news feeds where they're brief little blogs, and we're also creating a series of videos for each article that we hope break it down pretty well to what we're trying to get at within each article and engage it that way. We'll also put the memos that we've had up and continually refer back to the InCodePlus site where we're housing the Development Code. And in a moment, I'll show you one of these videos, because Ben, who's created and produced the first three article, yeah, the first three articles review, has done an amazing job, so instead of hearing me babble, we'll just watch one of those videos. In addition to presentations to you and the Planning Board, we will also have meetings with our Ordinance Advisory Committee. They were pretty active in the beginning of this project, and then as staff took the first three modules and really went in and digested it, got it in a spot where we felt comfortable with, the Ordinance Advisory Committee didn't eat, because we were dealing with a lot of minutia that would make most people's eyes go cross. Again, we were gonna fire them back up last March, and then literally the week before our first meeting with them, we shut down. So, we're gonna have a meeting with them the 1st of May. We'll meet with stakeholders, stakeholder groups, so the, really the power users of this. We're organizing those meetings as we speak, so the realtors, the developers, consultants will meet with those groups. And really, anybody who's interested in knowing more about our zoning and subdivision regulations, our development code, we'd be very much happy to meet with them. So, user groups, business associations, those kind of folks we'll meet with. We had intended to make, have some public open houses. Hopefully, things get right in the world where we can host those again, but we have to see. We wanna make sure we do it appropriately for the community. Okay, back to where I was on the, on the presentation. Commissioner Morris asked this afternoon who was on our advisory committee. It was a great question, so I put the, the members here. We've invited them to a meeting on May 6, I do believe it is, in the late afternoon to go over the first four items. I've got most, words for most everybody except for a few that their email, the emails I have are broken, so we're trying to track them down and get them contacted again. So, we'll be reaching out to those. But a wide range of board members that we have in our committees, professionals, developers, and then a few community members. Okay, I'm just gonna dive in and kinda quickly go over the items. Honestly, Article 1 is, there isn't much there in terms of excitement or regulation. It's a lot of preface and establishment. So, kinda diving into InCodePlus where the code will be housed, this is the new website. You can see the, it's broken down into the chapter. It'll be housed in Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinance. Currently, there are two separate documents that are only referred to by the Code of Ordinance, so we'll, this will live amongst it. The whole chapter's broken down into articles, divisions, subdivisions, and then as you get diving into it, then you have subsections. And you can kinda see the topics here. They're pretty bureaucratic, if you will, in terms of authority and purpose, vested rights, those sort of things. So, not a great deal of excitable topics there. The applicability, we will, this will be only applicable, for the most part, within the city of Manhattan. I say for the most part because as you know, we have a, an agreement with Riley County where for the Manhattan comprehensive plan area, generally speaking, that is the boundary of our Planning Board, and we share that with Riley County. So, the subdivision regulations will fall outside of the city limits as long as Riley County adopts them. And those subdivision regulations will apply both within the city and, you know, small area outside of the city within the Manhattan urban area Planning Board jurisdiction. So generally, it's applicable to city limits, but, um, that extends outwards with the subdivision regulations of, uh, the Development Code. And then we have some other stuff, vesting rights, severability, those sort of things. Article 2 is where the fun begins, with our district names, um, development types, those sort of things. And as I said, Ben Schmeele, our, our Long Range Planner, did an amazing job of creating this video. And now it's not working. So I have a backup here. Pardon me real quick. This is a little unorthodox of me just turning this on and sitting down, but I'm going to do that because he does a far better job than what I could, uh, explaining this. So I'm just going to let this roll for a moment.
Uh, welcome back, uh, to the video series on the Manhattan Unified Development Ordinance, or the Manhattan Development Code, as it will be called when it's adopted. This video covers Article 2 of the code, which covers things like zoning district conversions, development types, limited uses, and accessory uses. And again, uh, throughout this whole thing, we're going to mostly be looking at changes, major changes, to keep these video and informative materials short and less boring. Just going to reload here. So in Article 2, we can see how our current zoning regulations sort of change to fit this new code. And to do that, we actually need to take our existing zoning districts, which apply to physical places in Manhattan, and change them over to the new ones. So we, we need to convert them. A lot of what we were hearing throughout this process was that we have too many redundant zoning districts. For example, we had three different single-family zoning districts. And really, the only difference was lot size. So as you can see here by the illustration, we've combined our three single-family zoning districts down to one. That's called the Low Density Residential Zoning District. We've combined our, our two-family and general residential zoning district, which was really just a specialized zoning district that we only used once. We've combined that into the Low Density Residential Attached Zoning District. And we'll get a little bit more into what that means here in a minute. We've combined our four-family and mobile home zoning districts into the Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Those two zoning districts are very different, obviously, because one of them allows mobile homes, but their densities are relatively the same. So we wanted to combine them, but still wanted to make sure that mobile homes weren't necessarily allowed in the same place as permanent structures. So there's actually a provision for what's called a Village Development Type to allow for mobile homes, specifically in mobile home parks where they are today. Our Multiple Family Zoning District, the R3 today, actually won't change at all, functionally speaking. Uh, that will just undergo a name change, which will be called the High Density Residential Zoning District. The Urban Core Residential Zoning District, same thing, only changing in name. That was a recently created and adopted zoning district specifically tailored to high-density development east of the Kansas State Campus. So in that residential low-density zoning district, we obviously are going to allow single-family detached homes. That's going to be the primary uses that you see in those zoning districts as they are today. We do allow certain non-residential uses, which includes things like schools, churches, parks, things that are, are good to have in neighborhoods and, and really work well without, you know, being incompatible. Uh, so we want to continue that moving forward. In the Low Density Residential Attached Zoning District, that's where we start to get a little bit of, of a different form out of uses. Not a huge level of, of difference in terms of density from the RL District, except for this district allows attached, single-family attached structures such as duplexes, twin homes, townhomes. And of course, throughout all these residential zoning districts, things like churches, schools, and parks are also allowed. We're considering those kind of accessory neighborhood uses. So take that, take that for granted there. In the Residential Medium Density Zoning District, that's where the, the density kind of starts to take off as well as, uh, more flexibility in terms of different structure types. This is where we start to get into small apartment buildings, so three to five-unit apartment buildings, as well as medium-sized apartment building from six to 17 units. Since the code at this point kind of builds on itself, in this district would also be allowed single-family homes, uh, and duplexes. The multifamily structures are still at a bulk height and with setbacks that help blend it with the more lower-density structures so that they're compatible. So the High Density Residential Zoning District, that's where we really start to see, uh, buildings take off to the point where they're, they're kind of incompatible with single-family detached. Actually, in the zoning district, we've prohibited single-family detached homes from existing as well. These are, these are districts where we actually want to encourage higher density and a higher concentration of living units. So now I want to talk about our commercial zoning districts. We still have to take those and convert them into the new code as well because those are changing a little bit. Similar to the residential zoning districts, there was some redundancy. So a lot of those were, uh, combined or altered or just renamed. So our, our Downtown and Redevelopment Overlay District, those two things are being combined uh, to be the new Downtown Commercial District. Research and Business Parks, uh, our I-1 and our I-5 are being combined into the, just the Business Park Zoning District. Uh, Restricted Business, uh, the C-1, which is really just a, more of a, uh, professional office type of zoning district primarily seen along Points Avenue. That's, that's just being renamed. Neighborhood Commercial is also just being renamed. Aggieville Business District is, is being renamed to Aggieville Commercial. And the Highway Commercial is being renamed to Community Commercial, which is really just a name that is more reflective of our land use designation in our common land. So going through those uses, our Downtown Commercial District would really remain the same in terms of land uses and building form. Uh, we are updating the uses a little bit because there's a lot in our current code that isn't applicable anymore. They're really archaic. So we would update our Downtown zoning districts to include, uh, more modern uses like craft scale, uh, industry, shared-use office space, being more broad in those categories instead of kind of the laundry list of specific uses. Business and Research Park, uh, would pretty much stay the same. Uh, this would just be used for more campus-style business parks, uh, research and development, those kinds of things. That Business Commercial District, that's applied to the Points Avenue Corridor, would remain relatively the same, allowing more professional offices, so doctors' offices, banks. The Neighborhood Commercial District, uh, not changing a whole lot. This is where we see more neighborhood-scale commercial districts that get more into things like retail, restaurants, uh, more services, daycare, really all at a smaller scale so that it, uh, is more compatible with, with residential areas. Community Commercial isn't changing a whole lot. The Zoning District where we see more, uh, community-scale commercial uses, uh, so things that draw people from all over the community. So those are things like a grocery store, gas stations, large big-box retailers. Moving on to our Industrial Districts, likewise, we can see that these are, are being combined in some cases. Our Heavy Commercial and Light Manufacturing Service Commercial Districts are being combined into the Industrial slash Commercial Services District. Our Industrial Park and Light Industrial Districts are being combined into the Light Industrial District. And our Heavy Industrial District is, uh, just being renamed into the General Industrial Zoning District. That Industrial Commercial Services District, that's going to be more heavy commercial services to things like auto repair, landscaping services, heavy retail. A lot of these uses you can actually see along Fort Riley Boulevard. There is some retail, but it's mostly geared toward more heavy commercial uses. Our Light Industrial Zoning District is pretty much what you'd think it would be, manufacturing, assembly, warehouses, bulk storage. And our, our General Industrial District, they're going to be more intensive things, more factories producing and processing more raw materials. We have a couple of new districts as well, the Public and Institutional Zoning District. This is intended to be applied to more intensive publicly-owned uses and need to actually go through a zoning process. So those are going to be things like heavy utility uses, wastewater treatment plants, lift stations, traffic shops, maintenance facilities, things like that that would, you know, probably produce a lot of potential nuisances to neighborhoods. So we're also introducing a Mixed Use Zoning District. This is a bit of a new take on a, on an old concept whereby a mixture of residential and commercial can exist in the same space. It allows for, uh, higher-density urban form whereby you've got commercial on the ground floor and residential above that in more of a compact urban setting. We'll get more into that in the Design Requirement section where it actually talks about what buildings and street network need to look like in these areas. So here's all of our, our zoning districts as proposed. I covered all the base zoning districts here. We'll actually get into overlays, which is a bit more of a different animal in later articles, but just know that they're there. I'll take a second to talk about PDs or Plan Developments. Today, they're called Plan Unit Developments, which are basically small customized zoning districts that usually just apply to one property or a, a small cluster of properties. Those aren't changing at all. Those will carry forward into this, this new Development Code. So now I want to talk a little bit about development types. I kind of alluded to it when I talked about mobile home parks because it would have this Village Development applied to it. This is a new concept in our Development Code here. So development types, you have Cluster, Master Plan, and Village. A Cluster Development would be a development type that would allow for smaller lots, lower setbacks of structures, so how close or far they, they need to be from a property line, which really just allow for higher density. And the purpose of this is to help preserve open space or natural features where, you know, it may not be feasible to develop, extend property lines to the full extent of a subdivision. So this would help preserve green space around it and help these lots meet minimum lot size and setbacks. And it really just results in a more efficient use of land. So we also have a new concept in this called a Master Plan Development Type, kind of somewhere between a Plan Unit Development and a By Right Zoning District to hopefully encourage more of a mixture of uses and variation of lot size within the same zoning district. So this would actually allow for smaller lots, lower setbacks, and higher densities, and like I said, a, a more, more mix of uses, uh, with a few limitations, of course. So this would also encourage more of a compact, more dynamic, uh, neighborhood that would maybe be centered around a civic space or a civic use or a, a commercial use. We've also created a Village Development Type. Like I said earlier, this accommodates for mobile home parks that would all be on a common lot. But this would also allow for, uh, what we're calling a Cottage Village, which is essentially a common lot with a bunch of tiny houses on it, right? Permanent, uh, structures that are basically just small detached, single-family homes, typically less than 600 square feet. And this would really, uh, fulfill a market demand for that housing product to encourage, uh, a bit higher of a density and a more affordable housing stock. So now we're going to look at the uses that are allowed in these zoning districts. Our, our code has been, uh, reworked to include these tables by which you can see exactly what uses are either permitted or limited, conditional or accessory. So online, you can scroll through these different uses. Uh, it covers retail and service uses like department stores, grocery stores, hardware stores, more public, uh, institutional uses, automobile-oriented uses, industrial uses, things like that. So it's organized in this table. So permitted uses are, uh, simply that. They're allowed in, in a particular zoning district. There may be, uh, some design requirements that go along with that depending on the zoning district. Uh, but generally speaking, they're, uh, allowed to be there. Limited uses is, is a bit of a new thing. It's kind of halfway between a, a permitted and a conditional use whereby in, in different zoning districts, a particular use might be treated in a different way. Uh, that needs to be altered in order to mitigate for potential, uh, noise or traffic impacts. So those would be, limited uses would be, uh, administrative, meaning that city staff would be able to, to determine if it's meeting the conditions for a limited use without having to go through an additional public process for approval, which is more what a conditional use is. A use that, again, may not be, uh, compatible in a particular zoning district, but we still would like to, uh, potentially allow, uh, if certain conditions were met, to mitigate for, um, adverse impacts to that district. So conditional uses have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, as it's called, where property owners in the neighborhood are invited to come and participate in, uh, you know, support or, uh, give testimony or concerns. So that, that's an additional process. That takes a little bit longer and is a bit more resource-intensive, but is good because it allows, uh, more diverse uses within neighborhoods that we would like to see, but also, um, helps mitigate for those impacts that maybe we don't want to see. There's also accessory uses in this section. Those are, uh, specifically just uses that need to coincide with a, a principal use so they can't just exist on their own. So those are going to be things like parking lots, community centers, exercise facilities associated with a neighborhood rec center, things like that.
Okay, so, sorry, I, I realize that was unorthodox compared to what normally happens here, but, um, wanted to give you a flavor of, of, uh, what those videos will be like. And I thought you maybe would enjoy hearing from Ben rather than me go on about those topics, so. So that was Article 2. Let me get back to where I was here. Um, sorry, that was, that's the bad, down part about having, uh, used that. Um, Article 3 then, uh, is a similar, um, discussion of our overlay districts. So what Ben talked about in video, in the Article 2 was the base zoning districts. Overlays just go on top of them and, um, provide some additional, either higher standards or, uh, in some cases, they, um, uh, lessen the requirements or standards. Set, you know, uh, an overlay district may have less parking requirements or less setbacks, higher height, those sort of things, kind of depending on, uh, the desired output of that overlay district. So a lot of them stay, uh, and don't change, um, you know, are just replicas of what we have today. Things like our traditional neighborhood overlay largely stay the same. Uh, we've added a few design standards, uh, into that district to, um, make sure we're getting the, the traditional housing stock product that that thing's really designed for. Two new overlays that we have had, created for a number of years with the county, but just have never adopted, adopted them is, um, our corridors, the K-18 corridor and the Gateway Corridor, uh, the 177 corridor out of town. These are, um, overlays within a certain geography of those two highways. The, the idea is as new development is introduced to the county, the county would say, you would be, we will require you to become, come into the city and we would, um, apply this overlay district on him. And it's really a site and building design overlay intended to make sure we have a high, uh, a high, um, attractiveness to that corridor as you come in and out of town. So not super extravagant, uh, building design requirements or site design requirements. They're really in line with, um, what's really happening across the community. Uh, but they are there to make sure that those entrances into our community, um, are appropriate. And then the rest of them, the Business Park, the, the Redevelopment Overlay, and the University Fringe are all identical to what we have on the books today. So, um, a couple of things about the established neighborhood overlay. If you go down any block in the Ward Districts where this overlay is, you'll see a very high degree of variation, both front yard, front properties where the house faces as well as side properties for corner lots. And so we shrunk that setback down, um, to really bring a lot more homes in a conformance. Uh, it, to me, it's a, a compatibility issue. It's an affordable hu- housing issue where today, if, if I'm one of these homes an 11-foot setback off of a, a corner lot, it doesn't meet that setback, I have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if I want to put a building addition on my house or whatnot. And that becomes timely, that becomes expensive with board applications or whatnot. And really, they're part of the framework up and down those streets. They, those homes are probably, um, there are several homes within that setback already that has historically been there. So we've, we have shifted that setback down to be more accommodating with what has historically been there in our community, in that neighborhood, in those, uh, overlay districts. Uh, and then a few, uh, design elements that I mentioned. I've already covered this part, but you could see the, uh, boundary of, uh, the Gateway Corridor and the Eureka Valley Corridor. And this is kind of what we're getting at with those design standards, just, um, building design, window openings, you know, making sure it's not just a, a big blank brick wall that has some, uh, variations and, um, some attractiveness because those are, um, the gateways to our community. So if they look bad, then, you know, obviously it sets up a, a bad precedent for our community as great as it may be once you get into town, so. And then really, the redevelopment stuff doesn't change a lot. So that is a brief overview. Uh, I can dive into a whole lot more if you'd like. But, um, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you may have.
Um, Chad, I have a, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
I've, I've not seen in, uh, necessarily, I haven't seen the definition like of civic space. Is that park? What is civic space?
Yeah, that would be a park space.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, any, uh, be it publicly-owned or privately-owned, um, open space designed for the public. So we could have, you know, our typical park, but, uh, like Aggieville, we have some, um, design standards where if you are in, have such a large building, we would want you to carve out some, um, some public space, um, in that building for gathering.
The Optimist Park is a ballpark, it would be civic space.
Yeah.
As would Triangle Park in Aggieville and, okay, thanks.
Yep.
And, and then, uh, I was on the Gateway Corridor Committee a long time ago. Uh, and so I thought I better ask, what gateway entrances are you, uh, are, what are they? For you, with this plan, what are they?
Yeah, so it's the two that were originally designed. So on the east side of town, coming by the Kansas River, this corridor here off of 170 and then on K-18 there by the airport are the two corridors. They're really the, the areas that are zoned, commercial, industrial now. Obviously we have other corridors coming into town from Highway 24 and out of Pott County into the north. But they are, you know, they're, they're a little bit different flavor than what these areas are in terms of the development potential, so.
But this would apply in the Eureka Valley, on Eureka Drive or.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But what about 177? Why wouldn't that be considered? That's what I wondered, which ones are you talking about?
Yeah, this is 177 here.
Oh, okay. I thought you said it was 24 and K-18, but you said two.
Uh, 177 and K-18 are the two that we have proposed regulations for. The other corridors such as Highway 24 to the east of town, Ortauto Creek Boulevard to the north, we have not created some districts yet.
But 177 was the focus of our gateway corridor study and, and K-18.
Correct. And they are created and they're, they're being incorporated.
So there are three of them?
So we have two, the Eureka Valley, K-18 and the Gateway Corridor, which would be 177.
Okay, thank you.
For now.
All right. I'm, I'm interested in, when we get to the point of explaining, I'm interested in knowing those situations that the staff would determine as opposed to the public process. So if you could break that down then, I don't need to, I don't, there's not, we're not looking at the whole thing or enough of it tonight, because otherwise we'd be here really late.
Right, and it's just the first three, but.
Okay.
Um, let me quickly kind of touch that and I'll be brief because I know it's a late evening already. So I apologize, but I can't leave something alone, I guess. So this is the webpage. If you go to view, you can drill down into the regulations. And so the limited standards live here under 2E, if this thing will load up. And basically anything that is shown to have a limited use associated with it has use limitations. So if you can see this, I'll try to zoom it up here a little bit. And, and it's not that great of a, a change from what we have now. Within zoning districts now, we have limitations, use limitations. These just maybe copy them over or expand on them. So if I'm running an automobile and parts, motorcycle parts store, I have to, before I can get my building permit for a new building, one way or another, ensure that these four things are being conducted or accommodated for. So loading docks can't be off of a street. There can't be any materials off, you know, put outside overnight. You know, pretty simple stuff there. We have a lot of these already. We just broke them out. So this is what the administrative approval process would be during that building permit. You know, gas stations have to, unless one's a little bit more architecturally relevant with canopies that are, have us, you know, integrated with the building design and car wash stacking distances and those sort of things. So that's what it means by the administrative approved process through the use limitations.
So the question on that is, if, if the applicant isn't happy with the administrative decision, what's their recourse to have it pondered? Does that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals then?
Yeah, it would be an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've tried really hard through this whole process to make these regulations pretty objective. To, and you know, that's not always accomplishable, but it, but as best as we could, is the gas tanks underground or above ground? Well, that's pretty easy, right? Or.
There shouldn't be a lot of room for interpretation.
Right, that's it. That's exactly it. And so it should be pretty cut and dry.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
I think the example I'm thinking of would be a certain percentage of a lot or something.
Oh, I see. Yep, and those are within the residential, we'll pick residential.
Yeah.
I think I clicked on the right one. So here's the table for it. So this is the low density residential, so the single family. For a standard subdivision, you have a 10,000 square feet a lot and 50 feet a lot width. And, and that's a pretty simple table to, to use. Where now it's in a list and it's cumbersome to get through, so. Hopefully that addressed your.
Well, you can, we can talk some of the time about what are some of those things that you're, you think are, are routine? I'd be interested in those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chad, this is Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Um, I thought the video was very well done.
Thank you.
And I hope there's more of those. For someone who's not, not something I would use every day, I think he did an excellent job of explaining it and broke it down into pieces that I can even understand. And that, that's meaningful to me. One of the reasons we went with the MDC now is to make it more user friendly. Is it more user friendly? Did you get feedback from developers and people that went to it and looked at it? Is it more compatible for them where they don't have to, like Mark was saying, easy to interpret? Is it easy, accessible? If you tab, you know, I went through some of those links they opened, which is always a good thing.
Yep.
Open and work. And, but is it what they are looking for? Is this enough detail for someone who wants to come in and build something or have a question? They know exactly where to go.
I hope so. Up until just a few weeks ago, we hadn't had the full clean version to try this out. And a lot of these things up here, these tabs have not been built out yet. They're still working on some. The calculators, I think is going to be a great tool for folks, but it is not quite there yet because they have to accommodate all the code or the, the regulations we provided them. But the idea behind it is, I want to create a restaurant. I can figure out what zoning district it is, plug in how big of a building I want, plug in my occupancy. And then that, these calculators, I hope is what we've been sold is that they will spit out, you are required to have this many parking spaces. Your sign allowances are these things. Your landscape requirement is this. And so hopefully this calculator will be a usable function. Similarly, the tables, we've broken out all the tables. This is still also being built out that you can see, once you get used to how it works, oh, I need to go to my zoning districts to figure out, can I build a coffee shop here? And this ta, tab will have it and you just go down and find the commercial district and click it and that table will be there instead of having to flip through pages and find the dog ear of your book. Likewise, all the definitions will be, well, that one won't be, that one will be. Got some work still to do, but the definitions will have hover over popups and click back and forth through tables and sections. So we haven't really been to a point where we could share this a whole lot to folks. And that is the purpose of these next three or four months is to do that. And I hope, and I obviously am a little too deep in the weeds on this, but I hope people find this stuff more user friendly than, than our current regulations.
Because eventually it's going to save staff time.
Yeah.
If you get it all right in the next few months and make it, make the website user friendly for anybody who wants to build anything in our community, that they're coming to you with questions after they've went through all of this process and know what they want and where to look for. Because that's been the biggest complaint we've had, is that they just don't know where to go, what to do and all of this and how long it takes. So hopefully this cuts down on staff time and it makes it easier for anybody who wants to start a business or a house, renovate, whatever it might be.
Yep.
At looking at that. What the, on one of the pages, I think it was page four, at least in my packet, I don't know where it is on your packet. What is a density, density bonuses?
Sure. So a density bonus, it's a fancy word of saying, if you use some of these zoning development types. So this is a standard one, standard subdivision for, and the density bonus would only work for residential. Standard development that we see today generally would not have its density bonus. But if you're willing to, instead of building this where all the property lines go out into the middle of the gully and, and it, you know, there's no preservation of anything, if you're willing to set aside steep slopes, mature, large growths of trees, wetlands, ponds, those kind of things for either natural protection or public amenities or trails and those sort of things, then we would allow you to build more on the same amount of land. So the, the lot sizes would be shrunk down so you could build more homes. The setbacks would be shrunk so you could build closer. As long as you're willing to set aside this land to either the city or the nature conservancy or Audubon or even the homeowners association, as long as it's held in ownership where the public could have some use of it. So it's a trade off of preserving some natural element that is important to us or others. And, and then that developer and those homeowners would be able to sell more lots.
That sounds good. I don't know if we had that before.
No.
That was, it seemed very unique. So something like that, let's say a project of that kind, would that have to go to the, the planning board first?
So that would occur during the, assuming the, the annexation, rezoning and subdivision process. And those processes are largely going to be the same as what we have. A cluster development would have one extra step of identifying those natural things that want to be protected and saying, this is how we're going to protect it, rather than just a straight plot.
Okay, that sounds good. And I had a question about the planned development floating zone, but then I read into it and it was there. The definition was there, which made it a little bit easier. It's also good to know about the three types of different items you had where the cluster, master plan and the village for tiny homes.
Yep.
Because that's a topic that consistently comes up. So it's good to see, at least we're talking about it and now actually see that it's going to be there.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's progress. And our community might be, there might be some folks that would like to invest in such a community. But there's still this idea of Board of Zoning Appeals. And we're trying to give that board as little work as possible.
Yes.
So we're not constantly having to give exceptions.
Right.
To the rule.
Right.
Will this do that?
That's our hope. The, the discussion here I provided in the established neighborhood overlay, so the, the TNO that surrounds City Hall that, that we currently have. We've shrunk that front yard and corner lot setbacks down. Today it's 15 feet, 14 feet, excuse me, on all street frontages. We've shrunk that down to 12 feet, in some cases even the 10 for like patios and, I think, patios and such. I believe that's the number. With the idea that if you look at this block, there's all sorts of variability there. Maybe nine feet's too close, but is 18 or, or 13 that big of a deal? And so we've shrunk that to be more accommodating to these neighborhoods that are, have been there for decades. Everyone knows and loves them. And, and so why not bring more of those things into conformance? The other thing we did, we tried really hard not to create a whole lot of non-conformity. So we didn't make a bunch of bigger setbacks or, or scratch off a lot of uses within the zoning district and then put a business there and say, sorry, you can't expand or change or anything. Although we have drastically redone our non-conforming process to accommodate, not, we, we've changed the, the approach than what we already have. And a number of you have seen that before. We brought that before you. We'll discuss that later.
Sure, sorry about that. I, I saw somewhere where you, there was a discussion at Board of Zoning Appeals. And hopefully there was a comprehensive view of what are the types of items that are going to them and that staff ultimately approves so that they have, they approve it at the end of the day. Because I know when the staff doesn't approve it, it probably doesn't end up in front of them anyway.
Right.
So if you looked at that comprehensive picture and then plugged in all of those gaps into this MDC, then we won't stop that process because then we're just giving more exceptions, exceptions, exceptions to the rule.
Yep.
And let's just have the rule and avoid some of the exceptions to that rule. So I think, I didn't read the, all of the packet, all of the details of it. I did watch the planning board meeting from last night.
Mm-hmm.
I watched it this afternoon and followed your presentation as well as some of the remarks here. I think it's going in the right direction. It needs to be easy for anybody who wants to build, renovate, do anything they want in our community.
Yep.
And although some of the things were renamed, it makes more sense to how they were renamed. And I think more of those types of videos are helpful to people who want to do it, who may not be acclimated with some of the language that goes with it. So I think it's going in the right direction. It's, it's going slow, but hopefully it'll save staff time in the long end, long range. Thank you.
Sure, how to sell here. I was, yeah, I, the main thing I was interested in, in trying to see with this is that there's a million things that cause Manhattan to be an expensive place to live. And I just don't want the development costs to be one of them.
Yeah.
If, if this can, yeah, save people, yeah, 50 hours of consultant time with their engineers and people trying to figure out and understand stuff and then redraw something 10 times trying to make it work. Yeah, anything that we can kind of do to, to speed up, a speed up that process, make it less, less expensive to, to meet the requirements that you guys have somehow, that's the main thing that I would like to, to, to see happen with this. It's, it's great that if, if you guys can, it can free up your time and free up the morning of zoning deals. That's, that's great. I'm mostly interested in, yeah, trying to streamline the process, make it as inexpensive as possible to get these things met so that the process moves along and can maybe end up being, start bringing maybe the prices of some of the, whether it's lots or the houses or something, down microscopically at least, so.
Yeah, agreed. And, and that's the idea behind this in part is to make it predictable. Make it, you know, so you don't have to call a planner up and say, can you explain this? It's pretty black and white. And if it's pretty black and white there, then you can go get your building permit and not have to spend an hour or two trying to wrestle with it with a planner on something that's unpredictable. We are incorporating some design standards and I know some folks may have some opinions on that, but those design standards are really just setting that bar to what's being built today. And so we can keep our, an attractive community. And it's not, you know, design standards for Taj Mahals or anything like that. It's, it's, I think if you objectively look at it, they'll be where we're building today with a lot of our new construction. So we hopefully hit that mark. We'll find out over the next couple of months as we talk about this with stakeholders and the ordinance advisory committee and dig through it. We really tried. That's why it took so long. I mean, we could have just took what was given to us and put it out there and it wouldn't have been Manhattan. And so that's why this took a little bit longer. Let the planners that know and love Manhattan really dive into it and try to, to hit those marks, so.
On page four, and you don't have to look, but it had, there's a, it includes, or standards primarily for, and one of them is bed and breakfast inns.
Mm-hmm.
But in some residential districts. But then when I can, I mean, when I consider Airbnb's, they're everywhere.
Sure.
There's no way to put them in a zone anywhere. But it's so unequal. So a B and B owner that has one bedroom versus an Airbnb or a bed and breakfast and an Airbnb person that has, lets, you know, multiple, we, there's no control over Airbnb's. Can pack them in.
We're going to try to control them. And that'll be a topic we'll bring with, to you at a, another evening.
Good.
So if you could see here, this doesn't scroll perfectly well, I apologize. But bed and breakfast homes where the keeper of that inn, if you will, keeper of that home is present, that is limited. So as long as they meet those standards that are spelled out like I showed you, good to go. Get your occupancy license or whatever you need. Have at it.
That's like a bed and breakfast.
It is a bed and breakfast that we all know and love. Yep. The bed and breakfast inn is slightly more occupants and they can host events and tea parties and those kind of things. That's going to obviously be more, could be more intensive to a neighborhood. So they're largely conditional use where they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We also have incorporated, see if I can find it, and it doesn't look like it can, short term rentals. Here we go. Short term rentals. So if it's similar to where the occupants living there and just renting out the bedroom, spare bedroom. spare bedroom or couch or a blow-up mattress or whatever they are, they will be limited. So they just have to meet that list of requirements. But we're also going to require them to be registered with the city. And that's the ordinance that we'll come later and talk to you about. So that will be, uh, a requirement. And then the un-owner, non-owner occupied where I'm renting out my whole house to whoever for game day weekend or whatnot, um, those will be conditional use across the city.
Okay.
The caveats there is the bed and breakfast, we allow them to have, um, more folks than what our typical family definition is. Whereas these would be limited to that definition of family, which now is, uh, as many people that are related by blood or marriage or up to four non.
Unrelated.
Non, non-family members. So, that is how we're trying to manage some of that. And we'll bring a whole long more discussion on that with you.
I mean, it's just like the rental situation we have now. Uh, how are we going to enforce it? And we already don't enforce it. I mean rentals, and I, we don't enforce Airbnbs. I mean, well, anyway.
We can re- enforce it as much as you want with the tools that you give us. So, that'll be the thing.
We know how that goes.
Well. Any other questions?
Now, I just wanted to say for each of these, um, I'm sure Katie has been a big part of it too, I would think, to write them. So I, I really do appreciate all the time.
Yes.
That, that this is going into this to make sure that whatever we draft, we need to also have a, a mechanism that's in writing, uh, for legal purposes. And, and that is in our, uh, a heavy, heavy burden and a heavy task that goes unnoticed. But I, I really appreciate it. So thank you, Katie, for this too.
Rachel and in Katie's office went page by page with us planners and so we've been through it with the attorney's office. Page one to the end page. So it's been a lot of work and I've appreciated her help with it.
I do have another question. How long has it been since we expanded the urban boundary, urban area boundary line that, uh, which is outside the city?
Um.
Has that been done since the last comp, comp plan or?
No, I don't think so. I don't think since the early two, Eric's, I wish Eric was here now, but he would know. But I think it's been since early 2000s. We are looking at.
Are you?
At doing that with the county because of, um, Hartford Hills.
Yeah.
The northwest corner of the city that extends a little bit out of the planning board.
The city now pushes, has pushed to, uh, uh, fill in some acto- some spaces that, to that urban area boundary line. So it makes sense that we would talk to the county again about expanding that line.
Yeah.
And especially with the adoption of this new, um, or, you know, you're working with the county?
Mm-hmm. Ron, was I right on that kind of date of when the last time we looked at that?
I was thinking we did do an adjustment with the last comp plan update.
Okay, maybe you're right.
Um, certainly I think there was a recommendation to do so.
Yeah, we've talked about it, I do know that. And, and the Hartford Hills is going to force us to do it.
Yeah, good, okay. So, it's always the major production.
Yes.
So, good luck with that.
We'll get it done. It'll be fun.
I know, it'll work.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, you know, normally we have, uh, public comments. We didn't receive any electronically, so there's none of those and I don't see anybody in the audience, uh, out there to speak. So I guess we're not going to have any public comments and I appreciate the work on it. That, that's a massive amount of reading. I went through and tried to make, uh, you know, heads or tails of all of it. I think it makes sense to me, you know, we get down to some of the specifics, uh, eventually you may have some questions, but where you're at right now, just drive on. If you can get it all done, that'll be outstanding and get that website working, so.
We're working on it, thank you.
So, thank you on that and, uh, thank you for everyone out there that, uh, tuned in and listened to the discussion. And on that note, we'll adjourn for the night. Thank you.